Hi. So that's called the...
Recording in progress.
That's called the October 3 regular City Council meeting to order. Sorry that we were late from the closed session. So that's first do the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fruin?
Here.
Councilmember Mohan?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Mayor Chow?
Oh, here.
And Mayor, may I make a quick announcement? Councilmember Wong is participating remotely tonight. So I will request roll call votes for each item.
Okay, great.
And additionally, I will rely on Councilmember Wong to notify me of any members of the public wishing to provide comments from their location.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to make a brief comment about Councilmember Wong. Many of us have to work to support our...to make a living. And many of them, when we ask them to run for City Council, they are like, "I don't have time. I have to work." But then Councilmember Wong, even though he has heavy traveling schedule, he still stepped up to run, to represent the city. And he has...I've been...he has attended many meetings with residents in addition to the regular or special meeting. So I really appreciate that he has been doing for the community. Even though he is remote, I think we have his full attention. Thank you. Any closed session report?
Good evening, Mayor. The council considered all three items on the closed session agenda, and there's no reportable action taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Item four, five, six are ceremonial items. Today, we recognize October 19 to October 25 as the United Against Hate Week. And we are doing...so this will be an oral recognition. I choose to keep the item. I think we have been putting this item on the council agenda just from a few years ago, but we...I think there...we need to remind us, we have disagreement. We have...people have different perspectives. We need to continue to remember, we all love this country. We all love our city. Whatever disagreement, don't turn them into any hatred or violence against each other, even in language. So that's be united against hate and live...live a healthy...celebrate our healthy, diverse, inclusive community. Even though we are going to disagree, we will agree to disagree and still happily work together on things that we agree on, like emergency preparedness, community affairs, so many things we can collaborate together for Cupertino. Thank you. Then so there...and for item number five, we are recognizing October as the Hindu Heritage and Awareness Month. So this year, we also use oral recognition to recognize the different ethnic groups who are essential part of Cupertino. And we are home to a large thriving Hindu community. Hindu Americans play key roles in our schools, businesses, and neighborhoods, enriching our cities through their cultural value service. But I do want to recognize that Hindu community also sometimes experience certain negative perception because of people's misunderstanding of their culture from many years ago. But then they...they actually...I think we should all remember, we live in modern times. And all these Hindu Americans, they are part of the American. And yeah, so let's celebrate each other and our differences and the amazing ethnic cultures that we bring to the community. And item six, we have recognition of October as the Community Planning Month and appreciation for the work of Community Development Department. This is one of the new item that interim City Manager has brought forward. Would you like to introduce that?
Thank you, Mayor. So today, we would like to recognize our staff from Community Development Department. The Community Development Department has several divisions of planning, building, code enforcement. And there is a nice little script, Mayor, if you want to read that for staff recognition. But we would like staff to come up and take a photo with council after Mayor gives her remarks.
Yeah. Thank you. So the community development affects many, many parts of our daily life. It shapes how our neighborhoods look and feel, where new housing and businesses are built, how we move through the city, and how we preserve the character of our community. Our Community Development Department that consists of the divisions of planning, building, housing, and code enforcement leads this important work. They manage long-range planning, review development proposals, issue permits, conduct inspections, enforce building and zoning codes, and oversee affordable housing and economic development programs. They also help carry out our general plan, support major city initiatives. Throughout all of this, they work to balance the needs of residents, businesses, and property owners. Their work helps ensure Cupertino continues to grow in a way that affects our community value. So tonight, I would like to thank the Community Development Team for their dedication service. Your work truly helps keep Cupertino a great place to live. Personal note out of the script is, I really appreciate all of the team members because I understand you have to...sometimes you are overwhelmed with a lot of permits, a lot of application, and the people don't understand why there is this and other regulation from fire department, from the state law, and they have to abide by. So they couldn't understand, "Why couldn't I just build this 60 extra feet? Why do I have to install fires sprinkler all through...sprinkler off through the house?" But then I know that you do your best to follow the law, and thank you for all that you do for the city. So let's take a photo. Yeah, I think we are really lucky we have so many experts in the planning, building department in the city. Thank you all for what you do. Okay, now, next, we have postponements and orders of the day. We will postpone the revision to City Council procedures menu to a date to be determined. So I'm making that motion.
Moore, second.
Okay, so let's vote.
Councilmember Fruin?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Moore. Mayor Chow?
Yeah, aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now, we have the oral communications. City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda for discussion. The total time for oral communications will ordinarily be limited to one hour. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes. As necessary, the chair may further limit the time allowed to individual speakers or reschedule remaining comments to the end of the meeting on a first-come, first-heard basis with priority given to students. In most cases, state law will prohibit the council from discussing or making any decisions with respect to a matter not listed on the agenda. A council member may, however, briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by speakers. A council member may also ask a question for clarification, provide a reference for factual information, request staff to report back concerning a matter, or request that an item be added to a future City Council agenda in response to public comment. And Mayor, I have...currently have three requests to speak from Community Hall, which would bring us to nine minutes. I see no requests to speak virtually.
Oh, that's rare. Great.
And probably one more, so 12 minutes.
Okay.
Okay? So we have Wong family, followed by Haley Carter, followed by Margaret Carter. Wong family? Welcome, you have three minutes.
Thank you, the councils, members, and guests and residents. And I think everyone know the brief history of it because started with somebody, building professionals, and I can't distinguish what's a property line and what's...he thinks to visualize the one is, which two, three feet away. And then he started the retaliation within minutes because he thought we got attorney, then five-figure retaliation. We never...fine, we never see any sign of it before. Then took the property away, belonging away. Even we've...even the second time, we followed what the city tell us, make more obvious, the person ignored, and under the guidance of the law, and without notice. So that's the background. But city didn't stop of there. And they also, under the previous attorney, and have a sanction, kind of, coca sanction, literally put all the residents, the long-term residents, older and younger, and like a political prison. So very...make very hardship with this kind of sanction. And we...fortunately, we do have this temporary attorney. He...she had tried to brought up and have tried to have meeting for two, three years. We tried to have a meeting with the city, try to have little bit rights back. But there's no action so far. And so one thing is, if the silence, that means you're complacent to the evils. So I don't think the council want to be like some situation. And if today, I don't hear anything from you guys, that means your consent to have a meeting. We have a meeting with the city. So...and just what this brought up, since the city attorney is here as well, temporary as well, and we're going to ask request for a meeting to have...to have this things resolved. Actually, it's very small, a request, for long-term residents to have open communication with the city. So that's we want to say. And it's not easy. A lot of my friends say, "Why you even do that?" Because I just want to say, in the long-term history of human society, a human, hundred thousand years, righteous people is always minority. And people here, I think you want to be on the right side. So please do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Haley Carter, followed by Margaret Carter, followed by Belinda. Welcome, Haley.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Haley Carter, and my husband Doug and I and our four children have been residents of Cupertino for the past three years. I'm here to talk to you tonight about Tessalations School. We chose to move here from Palo Alto after we discovered Tessalations, a school that we knew would serve the special needs of our children. And we were drawn not only to the outstanding faculty, but also to the inquiry-based curriculum and very tightly-knit community. Since joining the school, our children have found a home away from home where they feel they truly belong. They feel they truly belong. Our seventh grader has developed confidence and a deep sense of authenticity in her learning, while our fourth grader, after attending several different schools, has finally found a place where her learning differences are not just supported, but celebrated. She has blossomed and is constantly engaged. Tessalations is now recognized worldwide as a magnet school for gifted students, and as a result, has helped put Cupertino on the map. Families have moved to Cupertino to attend Tessalations from places as far away as Dubai and Taiwan, helping to create the amazing diverse and thriving microcosm of educational innovation right here in Cupertino. Our extended family personally travel from around the world to come and visit us, staying at local hotels and exploring local businesses and shops. Our family regularly supports Cupertino restaurants and spends Sunday at the local farmer's market. Our children also participate year-round in some of Cupertino's amazing extracurricular programs, from art at Cal Color to water polo, chess, and AYSO soccer. My husband is actually the volunteer head coach for the AYSO eight-and-under team at Stevens Creek Elementary. And we feel this is so important, it's helping to continue our family's tradition of community service. Professionally, both my husband and I regularly host client meetings here, drawing entrepreneurs and startups from all over Silicon Valley into Cupertino. And one thing that has really stood out to us is the personal connections we've made since moving here. Around the corner from Tessalations, one of our neighbors, who helps decorate the Bub Road Bear, also sets up a Santa mailbox every year. And my kids look forward to it. They love dropping in their letter to Santa. And we had the opportunity to thank her recently, and she shared how much she loves seeing this sense of wonder come alive in children. So it is connections like these that I think make Cupertino such a special place to live and that have helped enrich our lives, just like Tessalations. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Margaret Carter, followed by Belinda. Welcome, Margaret.
Thank you. So my name is Margaret Carter, and I'm really grateful for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm a seventh grader at Tessalations School, or Tessie is all the students loving when we call it. And this is my fourth year here. And I love Tessie for so many reasons. I have found so many new friends and mentors and made many connections that have inspired me to try many new things. I never thought I would be where I am today. So in...for example, in English, a few months ago, we wrote essays on topics we cared about. And I wrote mine on the negative impacts of logging and deforestation on our environment. The funny thing was, at the end of the unit, when we shared our essays with our peers and teachers, my science teacher told me she did her degree on the same topic, and we had a real, really cool discussion about that. And I love how we always find connections between projects and across our classes. Some of the other classes I really enjoy are RP Counts, Spanish, Math, Speech and Debate, and Drama, which...and the last two I'm taking as electives. I'm also taking an after-school computer science class, and despite never liking it before, I'm now really curious to do more with Python. When I'm not at Tessie, you can find me taking art classes, playing AYSO soccer or water polo at the high school. I'd like to mention that I'm the only girl on my team, but I'm the fastest swimmer. And I regularly walk or bike to school, and recently started doing that on my own without my parents or siblings, which sometimes is kind of nice. And at the end of the day, it's all really fun, even, you know, the homework that takes up a lot of the time, too. And one day, I want to be a book publisher or Olympic athlete, but for now, I'm enjoying my classes, friends, and teachers, and especially PE on a big field. I really love living in Cupertino and going to Tessie, and I know that the special time I have here will help me achieve my goals in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Next, we have Belinda. Welcome, Belinda.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, Councilmember Fruin, Councilmember Mohan, and Councilmember Wong. Thanks for letting me speak tonight. I just wanted to talk for a quick minute. We all said the Pledge of Allegiance when we came in here, and to me, it just reminded me, as that young lady was speaking about, one of my social study teachers who was talking about how the preamble is kind of an agreement between all of us. And some people look at that and they say pursuit of happiness, and they take it as a personal thing, but it isn't a personal thing. Pursuit of happiness is for all of us. We're all supposed to pursue happiness for all of us, not just a personal goal. I think that's really kind of what holds us together as a nation. If we don't focus on that, we're not going to make it, and we're not going to hit 250 years if we keep fighting each other like we do. So I just wanted to bring that to this chamber. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Belinda. And now, we will move to those members of the public wishing to speak virtually. We have one member of the public requesting to speak, that is San Rao. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and councilmembers. I wish to recognize some of the great work that I had a chance to observe from staff across various departments, but let me first give a shout-out to our transportation team. As we know, there was a pedestrian accident at Four Lap Drive at the crosswalk. It is a particularly difficult crosswalk with sunset causing difficulties in visibility, and kudos to the community that was highly engaged. And they met with the Public Works Director, Director Mosley, and with Transportation Manager, David Stillman. And we also were able to meet with the interim City Manager, Kupur. And so there was a number of community members from Four Lap Drive in the vicinity that had an opportunity to provide active input, being aware of the issues around the neighborhood. And kudos to transportation and Public Works because in just a few weeks since that meeting occurred, a number of changes have been made in the area, making it safer. There have been improvements in the crosswalk markings, there have been improvements in the lights at the crosswalk, the trees have been trimmed so that there's better visibility. And also, a unsafe crossing point where there was a number of people jaywalking into a eager...an entrance point into city parcel have also been closed off, reducing the unsafe crossings in that area. And so I want to give a shout-out to Director Mosley and David Stillman for tremendous work there. I also want to give a shout-out to the Public Works and Street Trees Department. They've been doing fantastic work in the area, west of the Blackberry Farm and east of Hotel, in building out more opportunities for street tree plantings and street tree improvements, along with ground cover and plant improvements. So tremendous work being done when nobody's watching. And this is why I want to give a shout-out, because when nobody's watching, they do a fantastic job, and it is our job to recognize that. I also want to recognize Parks and Rec. We have a lot of lawbreakers or rule-breakers in the sports center that have been using bot bookings and have been causing unfair booking system to be exploited. And kudos to Alex Corbelis and Colleen Ferris, as well as the front desk staff, for a lot of work that they've put in and a lot of time that has helped make improvements. We're not there yet, we still have a bot issue, but they've made a lot of progress since the last month, and want to give a shout-out for them. I also want to recognize tremendous work happening at Tessalations. I had the opportunity to observe the community come together with the school staff and meet with...or looking forward to meet with transportation team to make improvements there. And they're hoping that they get some transportation improvements in that area. They also have improvements happening with law enforcement. And finally, I want to recognize the transportation team for improvements around Faria, which they have 600K challenge around drop-offs, and they've made tremendous improvements there as well. So we have a lot of good work happening. I want to recognize ICM Kupur for her leadership. We've seen two years of inaction previously, and we've seen the city change under ICM Kupur and under this council. So kudos all around for work well done. And it is particularly important to recognize when nobody's watching, because that's...
Thank you, San. That's your time. Perhaps video can adjust the volume on the audio. And Mayor, that concludes the request to speak for this item.
Okay, good. That gives us some laughs. So for Concern Agenda, item eight to 14 are the Concern Agenda items. I believe we are pulling item 13, right? We are pulling item 13, the 5G item. Any...are there...anyone else who'd like to pull any other item?
Mayor, may I ask for the...for the recording in a minute? Which councilmember pulled item 13?
I think it's a recommendation by the city attorney.
Okay, thank you. So Mayor, you're pulling it.
So I'm pulling it.
If I might, Mayor, since this is an item that I think the council and the public have been waiting for for a while, if we could, rather than ordering it at the end of the agenda, if we could put it either before or after item 16 with the other public hearing, I think that would be an appropriate place for it.
Yeah. Okay. So would you like to make a motion?
So moved.
To that effect?
Second.
So we...
I'd like to second.
So the concern is...yeah, let's see. So eight to 14, except 13, right? 13. So are we doing...so we do public comment for then item eight to 14 first?
Mayor, if I may suggest, I don't think that the ordinance needs to be under public hearings, it could just be under the action calendar. So it could be perhaps the first one on the action calendar versus the last one on public hearings, just FYI.
So that would be right after item 16? Okay.
Mayor, would you like a roll call vote?
Okay, so... So we first vote, pulling item 13 and move it after item 16.
Moore, so moved.
And after voting, we will hear public comment on item eight to 14, except 13. Yeah.
Just for clarification, I believe Councilmember Fruin moved and Councilmember Wong seconded to reorder the agenda for item 13.
Okay.
After item 16.
I'll accept Vice Mayor Moore's motion as a friendly amendment.
What was the friendly amendment?
To specifically move item 13 to behind item 16.
Oh, okay. Okay, now, let's vote.
Councilmember Fruin?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion as amended carries unanimously.
Thank you. Public comment for the remaining items.
Mayor, I currently see one member of the public requesting to speak virtually. San Rao? Welcome, San.
Thank you, Mayor Chow and councilmembers. I had requested to pull the item 10. Perhaps no councilmember wished to do that. I believe item 10, which is the future agenda items, is worthy of a discussion and should not be on consent. I also believe that the list should be viewed from the perspective of the average resident. It's very easy to get lost in the sausage-making of all of the policies that you're all deliberating on, but I urge all five of you to really step out of the dais, step out of your roles, and think about what the average residents want out of the city and whether you are progressing their agenda, because it is for representing them that you are on dais. And so I sent in in my written comment that you may have received a little later than the cutoff for the written communications, a set of additions to the future agenda items. I hope you will pull this if possible, if it is not too late. And specifically, I want to call out the following items for your consideration to be added to the agenda. I have sent you a number of questions around financial obligations that will hit the city. Should you do a ground lease? And the... should you do a ground lease, and the occupant of the ground lease for Mary of Nivela runs into financial difficulties. And I urge you to not ignore those questions, because the hard questions need to be faced before you make these decisions. We are seeing the challenges with the county dealing with the financial deficits of the Valley Medical Center and the challenges around funding what has turned out to be a higher cost than originally thought. And it is important to really foresee what happens when there is a cash flow issue with that property, if the operator, if the operator goes bankrupt. I have sent you a detailed list of questions. I've also sent you a detailed list of legal implications of this. And I urge you to not move forward until you have had study sessions to review that. And once again, I'm speaking as a resident only, on behalf of myself only. I just want to clarify that. I also urge you to think about expanding food options for Cupertino residents as we continue to lose restaurants and shopping centers in Cupertino with the development of townhomes and housing communities. We are losing restaurants, and we need to replace them, and there is no place to replace them. And so you have to think out of the box. You have to bring in food trucks, which are mobile food operators all around us. We do have those. We have them in Sunnyvale, Santa Clara. We have them in San Jose, as well as in Mel Peters. And we do not in Cupertino. And the reason we do not is not because the Monique Code prohibits it, but because the Monique Code says nothing about it, because the Monique Code was written at a time and food trucks would probably not popular. And so we do need an agenda item to catch up with the times and enable food trucks in Cupertino in a way that brings in food traffic responsibly, brings in license revenue annually, has permits so that these are regulated, and at the same time, brings people here rather than taking people out of here. I'd also like you to add an agenda item to change the process around CWP. The CWP has no checkpoints. As Councilmember Wong knows, with any tech project, you have checkpoints. You have requirements that are reviewed. You have milestones that you pass. But with the CWP, we show up at the very end to approve, and nobody knows what we're approving, because at the time it is funded, there's a two-line description. So please put a process around CWP so you get to check in every quarter on the definition and requirements and scope. And finally, I hope you'll have a homeless encampment ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Mayor, no additional requests to speak?
Okay. Thank you. So may I have a motion for the consent agenda item? Does anyone have short comments to make? I think you can still make them.
I'm happy to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, as is...
I wanted to make a quick comment. I did speak to staff, the interim city manager, about some items on the TBD list, which I did not see, and she assured me that it would be on the next list. So there are opportunities to add things from the TBD list on to the next quarterly report that she submits. So it's not that we have forgotten.
So you mean newly added items?
Councilmember Mohan, just to confirm, you will be sending them to me, and I will add it at the next round? Correct. Yes.
And if you would like it to be agenda sooner, of course, you can communicate with us if you don't want to wait for the next quarterly update.
Sure. Thank you.
Mayor, I had a little trouble hearing that on the microphone.
So, I mean, so councilmembers can propose to add items at any time with two council members can propose to add any item at any time, they will be considered in the next quarterly meeting. But then before that, if there is a time sensitive, I think they can communicate that to the city manager, and then we can consider that in our weekly agenda setting to see if we want to agendize before the next TBD review.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. I think TBD is mainly for the items we didn't get to, but we could get to them earlier.
So Mayor Moore, I second the motion that we move consent items eight through 12 and 14. That was moved by Councilmember Wong.
Okay. Then let's vote.
Councilmember Fruin?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Do we have 15 study session on amendments to the Audit Committee duties, powers, and responsibilities?
Thank you, Mayor. So as background, in May, council had directed the Audit Committee to consider amendments to its scope of duties and recommend changes for council's consideration. So for today's study session, we have Administrative Services Department staff, Christine Alfaro, Director, and Jonathan Orozco, our Finance Manager, to present this item. And I believe the Audit Committee Chair, Ino, is also in presence. So thank you.
Yeah. Just a short note regarding the TBD process. I think this item was on the February review of the TBD list. And then we, the recommendation was to agendize it, and now we are, and then it went to the commission, committee, and now it comes to the council. So it takes time. Yeah. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight's study session will provide a summary of the recent council audit committee discussions...
Maybe you need to end your mic a little...
Sorry? Tonight, okay, great. Tonight's study session will provide a summary of recent council and audit committee discussions concerning the committee's duties, powers, and responsibilities, and the proposed changes for your consideration. This discussion stems from a council directive earlier in the year to evaluate whether the committee's scope should be updated to better reflect the emergent financial governance needs. Let me begin with a quick recap on how we got here. On May 20th, the City Council directed the Audit Committee to consider amendments to its scope and return with recommendations. During the July 28th Audit Committee meeting, the committee reviewed its duties in comparison to Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA, best practices and discussed possible updates. Ultimately, the committee unanimously approved three changes to its duties, powers, and responsibilities, and forwarded those recommendations to council for formal consideration. The three changes recommended by the Audit Committee are rename the Audit Committee from Audit Committee to Audit and Finance Committee. This reflects the committee's existing and evolving role in reviewing broader financial matters, including investments, internal controls, and budget format reviews. Second, amend section 288-100G to read to review the city's internal controls and internal audit reports. This rewarding better aligns the city's current internal audit work program and scope. And lastly, add section 288-100I to state to review the use of artificial intelligence in the city's financial reporting, internal controls over financial reporting, risk management, and compliance. As the city continues exploring and integrating AI tools into operations, this ensures proper oversight exists for evaluating risks, controls, and transparency related to financial processes. If the council supports the Audit Committee's recommendation, the next step would be to amend Municipal Code section 288-100. Staff is prepared to bring these amendments forward for the first reading in October 21st, followed by a second reading on November 4th. That concludes the presentation. Staff and Ino Schmidt, the Audit Committee's Chair, are available to take any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any question from councilmembers? Oh, then do we go to public comment first? Or would any Audit Committee member would like to make a comment before public comment? No? Okay. Then that's just...
The chair of the committees here, so if he'd like to make a...
So would the chair of the committee like to make any comment?
I'm happy to be here for questions. Otherwise, staff is perfectly adequate.
Okay. So thank you for attending the meeting to answer any questions. Yeah. So looks like we don't have any question for now. Let's go to public comment.
Mayor, I currently see no requests to speak for this item.
Oh, I can't get used to that. Last meeting, we had like 40 minutes of public comment on multiple items. Okay. So now we bring it back to the council. Any councilmember would like to make any comment or ask questions? Councilmember Mohan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a member of the Audit Committee, as is Vice Mayor Moore. All I wanted to say was this was a unanimous decision with the Audit Committee members. And the name change, as well as the additional responsibility, the additional responsibility is not really an additional responsibility. It's quite reflective of what the Audit Committee was doing even before the name change and even before this action. So I think it makes sense to change the name, to expand its responsibilities from audit to audit and finance. And so I just wanted to say that's all the changes that we are making, and it is appropriate to the work that staff and the committee is already performing.
Thank you. Oh, do I... Do I see anyone? Do I... Where do I see if anyone raised their hand? Oh, there. So Councilmember Fruin.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward. I appreciate the changes. And in particular, I just wanted to acknowledge the call out to the use of artificial intelligence. I think it's a really appropriate thing to be examining. It's hard for government to stay on top of that particular issue. So thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Moore?
Thank you, and thank you for staff for the report there. There's an issue that we have with regards to where the monthly treasurer's and investment report is residing at this time. And there's different ways that you can solve it. One way would add more time and complexity to the schedule for the Audit Committee, and that would be you could alter the municipal code so that it reverts back to the Audit Committee duties, powers, and functions. That unfortunately would result in a monthly Audit Committee meeting to meet that requirement. That's one way you could solve this issue. When it's, when the investment in the treasurer, monthly investment in the treasurer reports are sitting as informational memos, that we do not have the ability to speak about those items at the City Council. So another way we can solve that is to put them on consent for the City Council, and then we would have an opportunity to pull the item if there's something urgent or of interest in particular on those two documents. We could pull it and then be able to speak about it, or you could even not pull it. And then, as we're allowed to speak on consent items, you could be able to bring up whatever the issue was. But as it is right now, not having that ability to speak to those items, to those documents is not, it isn't transparent, and we want to make a correction on that and do it as kind of as simply as possible. So my offering is to put those two documents on to consent rather than doing a municipal code change and doubling up the, actually tripling the meetings that the Audit Committee is currently having. So I hope that there's some support for doing that at this time.
So the Audit Committee currently meets quarterly?
At least quarterly.
At least quarterly. I know that, I've been wondering whether it's appropriate to actually change it to bi-monthly, because when it's quarterly, I heard there were members who are missing some of those special meeting, since only four is required a year. So... Should we, I think mostly they are meeting more frequently than quarterly. So should...
Yeah, just a comment.
Bi-monthly?
Even though it says at least for a year or once every quarter, we are meeting more frequently than that. And maybe I can have staff confirm that.
Correct. Correct. We're, on average, as of recent, we've been meeting about six times, so per year.
Yeah.
Four of which are regular meetings and two special meetings, one of which, and it's going to be routine, about every November, at least going forward, we'll be having a special meeting to review the ACVER, or the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, so that we can get that to the City Council for review.
Because the spatial, attendance at spatial meeting is not required, and I heard that there has been some non-attendance of spatial meeting, since they are meeting six times a year anyway, so why not just make it for regular meetings? Does that make sense?
Yes. What would be the challenge with that is we meet on a quarterly basis, so establishing which months would be bi-monthly, right? So if we're meeting every two months, it would be February and then April.
So is it possible to just say four regular meetings and scheduled to be approved by the committee in the beginning of the year? That way, all committee members know that they should block those six dates. It doesn't have to be every other month. Because the problem with spatial meeting also is the dates are not certain, so once it's determined, some people might not be able to make time ahead of time, right?
Getting used to these new microphones. I think that would make sense for the meeting on the ACVER, because we would consistently know when that meeting is going to occur. The other special meeting may occur, because we do have pretty packed agendas, and we may usually have that second meeting to get through some internal audits. That timing of that meeting is a bit less known. It depends on when those internal audits are completed.
Yeah. But you can, if there is no business, you can always cancel that regular meeting, just like Planning Commission does regularly. But if you have set approved the regular six meetings in a year, then it seems it's better for planning.
If we did that, it would still require at least one special meeting. So if we had them, but we had to cancel, we had six scheduled, and then we canceled one, we'd likely have to reschedule that. And if we're making sure that, would that be it, then that would be a special meeting as well?
I think we are talking, thinking about if a special meeting has to be, if a regular meeting has to be rescheduled, like council meeting, we, if there is a holiday on Monday, we schedule that to Wednesday, that's still considered a regular meeting. So... Then as long as it's approved by the committee, then you'll have a schedule, you still have the flexibility to move the dates. So that's what I am proposing. And I support the Vice Mayor's proposal. You would like the investment and treasurer's report to be on consent as they have been, I think, until maybe 2023?
Sir, Mayor? Okay. So is your proposal that there be the four quarterly regular meetings and then two, like floating special meetings throughout the year? Or...
My proposal is Audit Committee has six regular meetings, and then the dates are approved by the Audit Committee in the beginning of the year. And then the dates are approved by the Audit Committee in the beginning of the year. Fiscal year. I think we can decide whatever makes sense.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may continue. So right now, the Audit Committee shall, through the municipal code, shall establish a regular time and place of meeting, shall hold at least one regular meeting quarterly. So that can remain. And your request is that you add in two additional regular meetings at the discretion of the Audit Committee, something like that, with consultation with staff?
Yeah, I think the expectation is that the dates are approved annually. So committee members would know ahead of time that they should block time for that meeting, right?
Thank you. So we're still holding the same essential number of meetings, but it's set up at the start of the year. And that helps repair the issue with having the special meetings because attendance is based on regular meetings, not special. And so we've, it's, that's enabled individuals to miss a number of meetings and just show up maybe twice a year. And that's it. I understand. I think that's a good idea. I'd like to hear something from staff about that suggestion. Any feedback on that?
We're flexible with regards to establishing those meetings and leaving two of them being floating to the committee's discretion. One, we'll know, we will routinely have that being the one in November. And then the last one to be determined either at the beginning of a calendar or fiscal year.
And I think the City Attorney will look into specifically what's required to have something be considered a regular meeting. And we'll consider that as we figure out how to work in those two extra meetings.
Okay.
Pardon, Mayor. So is also the idea, if you absolutely have to cancel a regular meeting due to a quorum issue, that the committee would be able to essentially make that meeting up with a special meeting? Is that, would that be acceptable?
I think the, I think Planning Commission, Prox Rec have been doing that, yeah. Right, they have been canceling their regular meeting. So if it's canceled, that's, I think that doesn't come towards your attendance as absence.
If the quorum couldn't be made, okay.
Yeah. Councilmember Morehand, yeah.
Mayor, my one concern is, and maybe staff can clarify this. The meeting that the, that we, that you scheduled to before the Audit Report, that time is, I'm not sure you would have that date and time at the beginning of the year. Because that's really dependent on when the auditors finish the report.
Working with the auditors this year, we are getting into the rhythm of having routine interim and final field work. I think in a going-forward basis, it's safe to say that in the third or fourth week of November, we can consistently meet then and set that as our deadline to get a preliminary ACFA, a complete ACFA, to the Audit Committee for review. Certainly, if we make it to the fourth week, it makes it much easier. Third week would be a bit more challenged, but still doable. And for this year, we are, we will meet that deadline.
Okay, thank you.
And then lastly, that second meeting, we can probably aim for something similar to what we've done this year, where we had a special meeting there in February or May following a regular meeting to, as a placeholder, either to discuss those interim, their internal audit reports. Or if usually April is a heavier, a heavier meeting, that we can anticipate that it'll lead over into a second meeting in May.
Councilmember Fuwen.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, if you indulge the opportunity, I'd actually really like to hear from Chair Schmidt on this particular topic. Between the council members who are on the Audit Committee or have served on the Audit Committee, we make a very different time commitment to the city than what our volunteers do who serve on these committees from the public. So if Chair Schmidt has any commentary he'd like to make, I'd really like to hear it.
Mayor Chow, City Council Members, thanks for the opportunity. Yeah, I think recruiting talented, qualified volunteers is one of the major issues, probably for all the committees, on a committee. Although I personally find it inspiring and very interesting, many people probably don't put it first on the list. So I think the more flexibility we have been functioning. I've been involved with the Audit Committee for twelve years now, probably something like that, with various vacations and then returning. So I think we've succeeded in having four regular meetings successfully with, and then we've almost always had two to three special meetings. And in some years, we've had many more than that even. So I think the flexibility part of it would be ideal if there's a way to consider that. Because sometimes special issues come up. There could be special audit needs, and you can't really predict those. And you certainly, personally, I don't think a monthly meeting is ideal. But we could certainly, if we're flexible, we could meet monthly if the needs arise. So those are pretty much my comments. I found it difficult to find qualified recruits. That's just the issue. So I think the more flexibility, the more chance people see that they can be contributing by being on the committee. And then keeping it flexible is probably the right way to go in my mind. But happy to answer any other questions, too.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
So just to clarify, I think we are not talking about monthly meetings. It's at most like six, right? So that should be reasonable. Next, I have a question about the Rose Center. I like the idea that we are renaming that to Audit and Finance. But if I look at the current code, all of the items are really most all audit specific except reviewing investment report. It's like reviewing. You are not really making plans or helping the city to do financial forecast. So I, this is a result of consulting ChatGPT. Just for reference, I'm not saying this is what we should do. But for reference, what could financial oversight look like that Audit might be able to help with? Fiscal sustainability, fund balance levels? For example, I think we had the issue of cash, too much cash that has been deposited in cash accounts, like up to sixty million dollars, reduced to twenty million dollars in cash or cash equivalent. When other cities, I've looked at, they have, they put about two to five million dollars in cash equivalent. And when the interest rate is now one percent, it's higher right now. That might be something the Audit and Finance Committee can help keep an eye on. So we are making the most of our fund, of our investment. Not really fund balance, but then also long-term fiscal financial forecast, debt obligations, reserve policy, and revenue performance, a review of how our property or sales tax revenue look like, expenditure trend, look at how much, how is our trend in expenditure? Not just Audit. I think we really need to look at, are we trending to spending more? Are we spending under our revenue? And propose the, evaluate proposed budget amendments and capital cost changes and so on. So these are just some examples. For example, I see when the governor proposed a budget, the legislative analyst office usually will provide their analysis and even critique some of the budget requests of the governor. I thought that's very interesting, that perhaps this is something Audit Committee can provide some insight into this as more of a financial oversight. So should we maybe bring this back to the Audit Committee to consider in terms of the meeting frequency and format and financial oversight responsibility? Or do we just give direction to the City Attorney to revise the mini-code? Yeah, I'd like to hear from the two Audit Committee members.
No, I think by expanding the definition to Audit and Finance Committee, the finance, all the items you listed do come under the umbrella of finance. So I'm not sure, you know, we could go into details about what exactly staff would be doing. Because there's a huge impact on the staff as well. Because that's an additional responsibility that they now have to.
But I think that the staff already does for the council.
Not in the, not with the details that you've laid out. But my point is, I'm not sure it makes sense to bring it back again to the council that could be determined by the Audit Committee internally. And we could maybe report back to council with the additional new duties that the Audit Committee would be performing.
I think any additional new duty would have to be municipal code amendment. So it does need to come to the council if we are adding them to the municipal code. Yeah, so. Councilmember Fuwen.
Thank you. I was going to suggest as a potential workaround for the issue, since the question that seems to be coming up here is the incentive that members of the committee have to attend, which has to do with our attendance policy and the fact that we exclude special meetings from the attendance policy. Could we not simply change how we apply the attendance policy to special meetings, at least as regards the Audit Committee for these two purposes? One, for any special meeting at which the ACFA is reviewed and any special meeting at which internal audit reports are reviewed. And if we were to do that, then we might not run into that problem and resolve the issue that you're looking at.
I think the intent of not including spatial meeting because it's an added meeting. So the times might be chosen when one of the member just simply cannot attend. But maybe the committee have a time-sensitive issue that you really need to meet. So it seems unfair to count it towards attendance. That's why I would like to say, let's have six regular meeting. So you are expected to attend six. But two of them meeting, but the schedule could be just approved by everyone as a whole in the beginning of the year or just one time a year. So people have that expectation. Okay, here are the four, six dates I will try to make it. And if you have to reschedule, you can as a whole decide that, of course.
So I get that. I'm offering this primarily to the City Attorney, who seem to be concerned about whether, you know, what the standard is for a regular meeting versus a special meeting. Right, we can create the expectation that the committee should meet a certain number of times. It's probably going to have to meet in this particular range. It's clear that some degree of flexibility may be necessary just because of when things are available. So we can create the expectation, make sure that the requirement sits there. If it's early enough, great. I just don't want to tie our hands one way or the other.
Yeah, okay. Council, Vice Mayor Moore.
Thank you. So according to the municipal code, the Audit Committee shall have four regular meetings. We missed the first regular meeting at the start of this year. I don't know what happens if you, if that occurs. I did keep track of the attendance going back to January of 2023. So I can run through that fairly quickly. First meeting, all five present. Second, all five. Third, one individual missing. The next meeting, three. Next meeting, three, five, five, five. Puts us into 2024. Four out of five, five, three, 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 four, four, three, four, three. So those meetings, when there's three, it, except for when Councilmember, former Mayor Wei was unwell, it was, it would have the two council members assigned always there. So really, it's only two council members plus a member of the committee, usually the chair, like always the chair. So we've, it's been a really small group. And I would, I, I'm kind of comfortable with sticking with the four regular meetings per year and then having two special meetings that are floating.
But it considers regular, so two floating regular meetings.
Well, you could say you shall hold four meetings quarterly and two additional special meetings. I don't see why you can't ask for those to be scheduled by the committee. But the attendance part is determined by meeting those, attending those four quarterly meetings. And actually, because we're having the November meeting this year, we're already up to, one, two, three, four, five, six. We're holding the October 27th meeting, and then we're going to have a November. So is that, are we at eight then? Yeah, so we'll be eight for the year, but only three, I believe, are regular. I'm assuming the last one is going to be a regular meeting. But the importance there is to really incentivize somebody that if you're, if you're going to go through the interview process and be assigned to this committee, that you're going to do everything you can to show up. And I would assume that these appointees are allowed to do, as Councilmember Wong is, having a remote appearance if necessary, if they're traveling. Is that allowed or not?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so it is possible that we could have been, if he did not know about this, that if one of the individuals was traveling, that they could be remotely participating, which would definitely help.
I guess to me, it's, if I'm someone applying and I look at the code, it says, oh, at most four meetings a year. That would be my expectation. And then all of a sudden, I find, oh, I have to attend eight. Then that might be something I wasn't expecting. That's why I thought the mini-code needs to be more clear on the expectation. If we are expecting regularly, we will have six meetings. Let's just say that so that it's clear. Even though it's not six fixed dates, but expected that we will have six regular ones, at least, then that, that way the expectation for members are more clear, I think. So. Anyway, so I think we had enough time to discuss. So should we make a motion for the City Attorney or?
Sorry, just wanted to clarify something you were discussing just a minute ago. Would you be, are you suggesting that this recommendation that council will come up with and provide direction to go back to Audit Committee and then come back?
It doesn't have to. I think this is study session, right? So we don't have to have a motion. So it could be, the staff can synthesize on what the council majority might want to look like. And then maybe you can bring back.
It would be better for staff to have some direction from council. Because the original item was go to Audit Committee, then they can recommend, and we bring it to council, which we're doing. If council is providing direction for staff to take something back to Audit, we can do that. Otherwise, I'm wondering what the mechanism is for me to come back to council.
Yeah, I think for the frequency of the meeting, probably we can just make a motion. But then in terms of the finance oversight, I'm kind of thinking maybe the Audit Committee can take a look, and all those staff can take a look what's feasible in terms of, likely it's something the staff is already providing information to the council. And the auditor will be helping with. will be helping with long-term financial forecasts, which a lot of times we do get in, right? So, so maybe it makes sense to go back to the Audit Committee.
Pardon me. We can direct staff to consider all the recommendations that were proposed today.
And send it to the Audit Committee with recommendations and we'll have a discussion about where we think that those, that financial oversight is best parked, whether it's council or?
But that'll be done at the Audit Committee level.
Do you need a motion or this is more or less, maybe, okay, I'll just make a motion to summarize what we said. Okay, so first, the, we would like Audit Committee to consider holding potentially at least six regular meetings. The date could be determined based on the budget schedule, on, on some may be flexible. So they can approve at a certain date for the year. So the Audit Committee can decide what makes sense for them. And then, of course, the regular meeting, like all other regular meeting, we are still able to flex, to, to reschedule. And then also consider that since we added the finance to the name, what kind of financial oversight responsibility may make sense for the committee to consider? This is just a rough, for the committee to consider, not really a direction, yeah. And then on do we need to include putting investment and treasuries report on consent? That doesn't need, does, do you need that to be in the municipal code?
Through the mayor, I, I don't believe it needs to be in the municipal code, but I do think that does need to be direction to staff.
So we can just, okay, direction to staff that we can just start to implement. Let's include the investment and the treasuries report on consent agenda as the way the city has been doing for many years. Yeah.
Mayor, may I suggest that, that the Audit Committee also discuss the potential for having a budget subcommittee, which is not a format subcommittee, but it, and it would be something that we would have a, a pretty, a pretty good discussion on, to have a team that would actually be looking at the budget itself, which is, it gets into what you're showing here with financial oversight, but.
So consider forming a budget subcommittee to review the content of the budget each So that's the direction.
So Moore, second.
So first is the timing. Second is consider those powers and responsibilities for financial oversight. This is just a reference on the screen. And then third is the, consider forming a budget subcommittee. And those are going to be referred to the Audit Committee. And then the fourth one is a direction to staff directly that we will start to include investment, treasuries report on consent agenda as we have been doing before 2023, I think. Yeah, okay. That's clear? Okay, any other comment or let's vote? Let's just vote.
Okay, Councilmember Fuwen.
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan.
Aye.
Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Aye.
Mayor Chow.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Do we want a five-minute break? Okay, we'll come back at 8:15.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, you introduced the item. Thank you. And with that, I will turn it over to Community Development Department, Department Staff, Luke Connolly, Assistant Director, and Emmy Sugiyama, our Senior Planner.
Thank you, City Manager, and good evening, Councilmembers. Mayor Chow, I will turn the presentation over tonight to Senior Planner Emmy Sugiyama, who's far more expert on this topic than I am.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and Councilmember.
You might need to be closer to the mic.
Perfect. Emmy Sugiyama, Planning Staff, and I'm just here today to go over the proposed municipal code changes as they relate to the requirements of SB 450. And so just as a bit of background here, in 2022, a new, and I don't know if I, okay, I may ask video to share the presentation that I have going on here for a moment, just because I see that's not happening.
I can also share that if you, if you would like.
Yeah, if you would, that would be fantastic. Perfect. Thank you, Kirsten.
Sure, just let me know when to advance the slides.
All right, yeah, please go to the next slide. Awesome, right on track. So as a bit of background, in 2022, a new Senate Bill SB 9 went into effect, which allowed for duplexes as well as two-lot subdivisions on single-family zoned properties, as long as then they met specific criteria. That criteria included that the project would not demolish an affordable or rental housing unit or be located within certain sensitive areas. They also established criteria for the two-lot subdivisions as listed here that was a bit more specific and used to ensure that the resulting lots were equitable. Slide. Perfect. Overall, SB 9 required that cities allow for up to two units of at least 800 square feet in size with reduced setbacks and parking, and then also a two-lot subdivision on single-family zoned properties. The bill did, however, allow for cities to adopt additional design, development, and subdivision standards so long as they were objectively worded. And so in 2022, the city adopted an ordinance to incorporate objective standards for SB 9 projects into our municipal code. SB 450, which went into effect at the beginning of this year, modified those requirements that the cities must allow or must follow when reviewing SB 9 projects. Most notably, this bill prohibited the city from applying standards to SB 9 projects that are more restrictive than those that are applied to other development in the same area. Accordingly, many of the previously adopted objective standards within our code can no longer be applied to SB 9 projects. And so these modifications being brought before you today are in an effort to update our municipal code standards to meet the requirement of SB 450 by aligning our single-family and our SB 9 subdivision and development standards, as well as making some of that language more objective. The modifications also introduce minor corrections and edits to address some typos and improve readability. And in general, these modifications are intended to streamline the city review process overall. Next slide. Oh, and I apologize, I was behind one. Could you advance one more slide? There we go. All righty. No, I was just out of order. If you could go back to the Planning Commission slide, I believe that was two prior to this.
Two prior.
Mm-hmm. Beautiful, thank you. So at their September 9th meeting, the Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend that your council adopt the ordinance following the removal of modifications that were not related specifically to SB 450 text errors or minor readability improvements. And now I'll ask that you advance two slides. All right, and so those items were removed as recommended and the overview of those items was provided in Attachment D of the staff report. And so to address within that ordinance the requirements of SB 450, we've proposed a new section within Title 18 that incorporates the objective standards that were previously applied to SB 9 subdivisions and would now apply them to all two-lot subdivisions in R1 and RHS zoning districts. These standards include requirements for lot configuration, driveway and building pad locations, as well as grading limitations. Next slide, please. We've also proposed changes to Chapters 1928 and 1940, which regulate development in the R1 and RHS zoning districts. These updates include the removal of some standards that were previously applied to only SB 9 developments. Those include the 2,000-square-foot size limitation, as well as basement and balcony restrictions. SB 9 projects would now instead be subject to the same size basement and balcony requirements as other R1 and RHS development. Next slide, please. So these changes also include an addition of new or revised design standards that were previously applied only to SB 9 projects and now would be applied to development in all R1 zones. For example, all future single-family projects would be required to provide a designated private open space area as well as an entry feature. And some of the development standards that were previously only applied to SB 9 projects would now apply to all R1 projects, including new driveway, curb cut, and grading limitations. Next slide. And in that same vein, in the RHS zoning district, design standards are also being modified to incorporate previous SB 9 standards, mainly focusing on new architectural requirements that weren't previously applied to RHS development. Next slide, please. So finally, to assist in implementing these new standards and to assure their objectivity, two new definitions, as well as modifications to three existing definitions, have been proposed. And as noted at the beginning of this presentation, the amendments also include minor corrections to the chapters listed here to address spelling, phrasing, and references that may have been misrepresented previously. So with that, staff recommends that your council conduct the first reading to adopt the ordinance to modify various chapters of the municipal code and to find the actions exempt from sequo. Thank you so much.
Any question from councilmembers? Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. I've got a quick question about the Attachment D changes to Exhibit A. Or you, you said, made a comment about that, that the Planning Commission had looked at this and they recommended to not have these amendments?
That's correct. Based on the conversation that they had, they were wanting some more discussion and more noticing to the public surrounding those specific edits. They were mainly related to codifying existing practices or interpretations that we had within the city.
Okay, so when would, when would that actually happen?
There is not a tentative date, but that's something we're looking to get agendized before the Planning Commission. There really was not any discussion on the different items because they ranged over a lot, even things like peer review of arborist reports to the duration and application could be considered active. So I think the Planning Commission's universal comment was that this was taking in too many areas. It had gone well beyond the SB 450 compliance and just code cleanup, and it was now going into new areas that they wanted to consider independently. So they felt it would be better to bring that back as a standalone topic so they could get into each item more closely.
Okay, and, and do you, do those items go beyond the 450 requirements?
Yeah, in most cases, they were pretty unrelated to that, things like the whole tree removal review process.
Right.
Again, I know, I, I think they're mentioned in the staff report, but one we had spent some time looking at was having a date with an application, for instance, is inactive for a certain period of time, that it would then essentially be declared, you know, invalid or no longer an active application. So it was very different from what we were looking at through SB 450. There were code cleanups that I think we thought are good ideas to consider for the Planning Commission and council, but it was more of a package of, we were looking more comprehensively at the code. It went beyond just the simple SB 450.
Okay, so I, I like the idea that they would be looking at this again and that it gets re-agendized. For 19.08 definitions, I personally would like to see that addressed because it was the original use of floor-area ratio definitions on the SB 35 project, for instance, which allowed them to count the residential garages. They used floor-area ratio definitions there and I would, when it comes back, if, if there's some thought that could go into how to fix that so that, you know, when someone says something's two-thirds residential, that it's truly two-thirds residential and it's not a garage, that it's real residential space and that we're really making progress there. So that, if, if things are going to be kind of out of the box from SB 450, then I'd be interested in, in having the opportunity to add to what they'd be looking at. And we haven't, we haven't really had that opportunity to make those suggestions in the past. Thank you.
Yes, I agree with Vice Mayor that we really should review the definition of FAR because it feels like our code was meant originally for a single-family home, and then we added a mixed use. And when the same definition, it might need to be adjusted when it's applied to mixed use because it used to be we count garage and then do you count it or do you not? How about underground garage? So those are things we should clarify. And then I think I thank the Planning Commission to only include language that, that come from the state law and then any other cleanup should be considered separately. So we are clear, this is good ideas to consider, but not required by state law. So it's good to separate that. And I see that in the attachment, there are a few sections that are removed, some are added. So if, is there like a summary of things that's being changed?
I think there's a summary in the staff report and then in the ordinance itself, it's coded by green text, is existing text that has been relocated. Red text would be new and red strikeout text would be text that is being deleted from the ordinance.
Okay, I, that's okay, since that part is not part of the motion, so I didn't spend too much time on that, that's fine. Just one question, I think we had a resident who reached out regarding a flat lot that somehow the, the current standard would not allow them to subdivide because of the flat lot requirement. So has that changed by the SB 5, SB 460 amendment or is, would, would any of the cleanup address that issue?
Generally, no. The standards are just being carried over from SB 9 to, again, R1 and RHS lots. So the same standards would apply. Those were developed originally in accordance with our general plan, which did discourage flag lots as part of this. And even during that discussion, we did make exceptions for larger or longer and deeper lots.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have questions? Councilmember Wong? I should, can Councilmember Wong, Councilmember Wong cannot access the raised hand, right? I need to check.
I can't.
He's saying something.
Councilmember Wong, do you?
I can't access the raised hand, but.
So you, so I should check Zoom meeting for your hand.
I'm good, thank you.
You're good, okay, then maybe. Okay, then maybe we go to public comment.
Yes, Mayor, I currently see no request to speak for this item.
Okay. Let's bring it back to the council. Any other comment? Yeah, Councilmember Fu.
In looking at the red light and the green line, I wanted to confirm a specific change that is proposed here at 19.28.1106. Says, "A porch patio or other front entry feature is required," and then underneath that point A, "The feature shall be oriented to face the street and shall include a front entry door also oriented to face the street." So is the green text on the bottom at A, is that new?
So that's transitioned over from the SB 9 requirements.
Okay, but that was not previously imposed on R1 zones in general. But if this were adopted, that would mean that if you have a door that faces the side, and many people do, I do, that would mean that if you wanted to do additions to your house, you'd have to correct this non-conforming condition?
So we have a separate non-conformance code section, and that specifically addresses if you're just doing alterations to an existing house that has a non-conforming element, that that does not need to be brought into compliance unless you are altering that specific element.
Okay. So you might have to have the same front door, then?
I think you can switch out your front door. I think it's more if you're changing that wall face, right, you're changing the feature.
Right. What's the rationale for this?
So originally, when this was written, this was to make sure that when you did see duplexes on a property, that they were following the general pattern that we see. The majority of the houses within Cupertino do have front-facing doors, and it's something that we encourage through design review typically. So that is why it was incorporated originally through SB 9. And again, the basis for most of these changes is just to take those same standards and make sure that we can apply them consistently.
Okay. I don't know why we would want to, especially for people who are designing their dream home. They come here, they buy a piece of land, they want to take down the old home that's maybe been there for 70 years and is falling apart. I don't know why we would want to restrict exactly how their entry feature is being done. So, I mean, I appreciate what's, what's being done here and what you're, you're trying to do. I just don't know why we're going to restrict people on this specific feature, because it's quite personal.
So would you like to propose a change?
Yeah, I would strike this requirement as a requirement and simply leave the language as it was. Yes, it's not enforceable if it's encouraged, but I think that tells people in general that's what we would like to see. But if you've spent your entire life savings to move here and build your dream home, I don't see why you shouldn't have the ability to put your door facing sideways.
And just to clarify, that is for the entirety of point six?
Yes.
Okay.
So I would, I would just return it to the language that it had and strike the subpoint A.
So which page of the red line?
It's Page 25 of the red line.
Oh, sorry. And what's the number again?
It's point six.
Point six.
So it's down at the very bottom of the page.
Repetitive?
Yeah.
So it was encouraged and now we require, that's an SB 460 requirement?
Yeah, it was to make the language more objective in accordance with state law. It wasn't directly related to SB 450 in that vein. Again, any requirements that are applied to SB 9 projects need to be objective standards.
Vice Mayor, you?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with this suggestion here, and it is my preference that the front door entry is oriented to face the street. It's a lot more inviting for the streetscape, and since these are objective standards and requirements, we don't have a, if we, if we don't put this in there, then people can make all sorts of entry ways, and I don't find it personally architecturally pleasing to see the sideways door. It makes it less inviting, as I said. So I really appreciate this, this addition. When are these requirements due, basically, for us to get them approved? I imagine there's a time limit on us, right?
Are you saying in accordance with the law?
Yes, so we've got to, this is our first reading of the ordinance, and then it needs to be completed by what, what time?
There's not one necessarily associated with SB 450, but I don't know if there's a separate one that I'm missing.
No, I don't think so. I mean, SB 450 went into effect January 1 of this year already. I think what the, the position here is, is that we can no longer treat the SB 9-created lots and the structures built on them differently from the R1 and RHS lots. So they had had, prior, when the ordinance was adopted in 2022, you could be more restrictive with them. Now you no longer can, which is why I think the change Councilmember Fu, and it just pointed out, is essentially getting more restrictive. It's, it's more limiting, but you could also change that. The goal is really that they're, they're treated consistently. You can't differentiate anymore and treat someone going through an SB 9 process differently through design standards than you, you could three years ago. That's what's changed.
Okay.
So Councilmember Fu, and you are thinking if the, if the door pre-exist and that's not facing front, they should not be required to change the?
I just, I don't see any value in this, this being, this being a requirement, none. It's an architectural feature. If you're doing your house, you should be able to, you know, it's your property. Put your, put your door where you want to put it. This just seems really invasive.
So if someone puts a fake front door, and then the side door, and then, and they also have a side door. I think some houses have two doors, also facing front door and the side. A lot of times, I don't know which door to use. Is that allowed?
So I'll say, just in practice, what we've been seeing generally, we do encourage for doors to be front-facing, and again, for the most part, when we're looking at these permits, they are at the design review phase, so we do have a bit more discretion to say kind of how they should be designed. That being said, in alignment more with our general plan, we do have a requirement for porches, and that has been interpreted to basically require that there be an entry feature with the door facing forward. And so, again, we encourage them on those projects. So I think for the most part, when we see that people do want a side-oriented door, they are proposing two separate entry ways at that point. Again, one that's for the kind of look of it, the facade, and then one that they might use separately. I know some of it's related to cultural kind of preferences as well.
Okay. Any other comment? Councilmember Fu, and do your hands still up? Forgot to check. Councilmember Wong?
Hey, thank you. I think I'm more in agreement with.
You may want to speak up a little.
I'm more in agreement with Councilmember Fu in here in terms of that placement, I think, of why I do prefer the front door to be in the front, or the main door to be the front of the house. I think it's, it's important for people to be able to make that choice or decision for their own home. So that's it.
So there was a place, I couldn't find it. There was a place that it says, there porch, the setback should not include a porch. It was included and then it was crossed out. So the porch could include, so it's, I remember, the porch will be able to become much closer to the, to the.
Right. I think you're referring to the encroachment allowance for front entry features. Currently, we allow for an entry feature to encroach into the front yard setback. We updated the definition, that you'll see that new definition, to incorporate front entry porch, to clarify kind of the size that we're looking at when we speak about a front entry feature and what that is, because right now, there is a little bit of confusion about whether or not something is a porch versus an entry feature, and whether or not that can encroach into that 20-foot setback.
Yeah, I found it. So this is a page, at the page 34 of the red line, says, "Front entry features, but not porches that's crossed out, may encroach into the required front yard setback."
Right.
Up to 3 feet. So crossing out, that means porch can now encroach?
With the addition of the proposed definitions, this would define the front entry features.
To include porch.
To not include porch. Porch is now separately defined, and so front entry feature has a square footage limitation, as well as a design limitation based on its definition. And so that would be what would be allowed for an encroachment. The porch is now excluded by definition.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Chow?
Yeah.
I do have a comment about curb cuts. We have this in our neighborhoods in the Rancho area, and what has been unfortunate is that we've seen that the curb cuts, many homes in our area, have a curb cut for RV parking, and they have been systematically been slowly removed upon each remodel. And I would like to at least propose something that would actually have a, at least grandfather for those who actually have their RV parking curb cuts to be, to retain those curb cuts to be allowed to be there. That's part of the neighborhood character in the Rancho Rinconada area, as well as the area that I'm in, in Lory Estates. And I see it in other parts where they have a specific area for RV parking to the side of the house with a specific set of curb cutouts that were permitted before the land was annexed by the city. So I don't know, I don't know what other people think about that, but that's my only other comment here.
Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor.
That's, I appreciate Councilmember Wong mentioning that because of our RV ordinance. If, would they currently be losing that extra curb cut for their RV parking? If they, you know, what would trigger that? If somebody were to do an SB 9 project, you know, what, is that going to go away?
Through the mayor, this, this has been happening in a lot of planning requests in our neighborhood, and basically, they've been trying to get rid of all those RV extra curb cuts. It's, it's been systematic through the planning department, and it's something I want to push back on, especially given the RV ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Through the staff, is there any bearing on what we're doing today for the SB 450 changes with regards to the RV, RV parking and curb cuts? Is that?
Right. From my understanding, those have the same non-conforming allowances through planning. That being said, there may be some public works requirements that do kick in for some of these either subdivisions and/or redevelopments, and I unfortunately am not aware of what those look like or when that might be triggered.
And I also think that that would probably be another item that would be up for consideration that's independent of this SB 450. There could probably be a whole host of things, talking about non-conforming uses or things that are grandfathered in, like the curb cut. Generally, from a planning perspective, when you get a new project, whether it's a commercial or residential area, you try to eliminate curb cuts, just for pedestrian friendliness and other things. You try to eliminate having vehicles pulling in, having multiple driveways. You, you tend to see that a lot when corner lots redevelop. A gas station is a classic example, where you have cars essentially being able to pull out any which way, and you tend to limit that for safety reasons and for pedestrian, you know, enhancements. But I would assume that's really the reason behind eliminating a curb cut when homes redevelop.
Okay, thank you.
So Councilmember Wong, I'm trying to understand. So you are requesting grandfathered in curb cuts, so it could allow people to park potentially oversized vehicle like an RV on their driveway, rather than taking up space on the street?
Yeah.
Right? And then that would then also make it more dangerous to bike? So maybe we can direct Planning Commission to consider this, this direction? If you can maybe write something down and maybe make a suggestion to Planning Commission to consider?
We don't need Planning Commission to do that. We can do that directly. We have the authority to do that. So I'm happy to write it. I'm just saying that we could make that decision here. By taking the RVs or larger vehicles onto the driveways, we free up parking, parking spaces by having those curb cuts. While there may be a point that, you know, having egress, ingress, multiple options on corner lots, trying to restrict that is, is the current practice, it is very inconvenient to people.
Yeah, I, I understand, but I think today's item, we are trying to limit to SB, I keep forgetting the number.
450.
450. How come I write 460? 450, yeah. So I think we are trying to follow Planning Commission's recommendation to limit the changes to 450, SB 450. So maybe since Planning, Planning Commission will do another round of other recommendations by staff, so maybe that's something I thought, that would come back together with the Planning Commission's recommendation.
I'll reach out. There, there's things like curb cuts, there's things like fence, fence lines.
Yeah, so any other ideas on what we can do to improve our code? I think maybe we can reach out to Planning Commission. I think maybe send the suggestion to Tina, who can convey it as something for Planning Commission to consider from one council member. I think as a whole, they can decide. It's not the direction from the council, but they can consider that, yeah.
Madam Mayor, if I may, because I'd like to be able to accommodate this request. I think the problem here is that we would need a new first reading in order to be able to, to add it. So one way or another, it would, it would mean a subsequent meeting. Could we add this as a separate item for a future council meeting?
So you don't want this to, for the Planning Commission to consider together with the other items that's?
We could. I would just like to be able to accommodate it on a quicker timeframe.
Do we need, why is there a need for a quicker timeframe?
I'd simply like to be able to accommodate the request. I think it's a reasonable one.
Okay. So, okay, and, but I, but I think that would mean one more time going through the amendment. I think for the staff, that's one more time to, to modify all the municipal code. So if there is not really a time limit, I think it's better to just do it together with the Planning Commission, if that's okay, yeah. Okay.
Through the mayor.
At least have two council members. I would like to consider that, too. So we have a majority that we would like Planning Commission to consider that suggestion. Yeah. Vice Mayor?
Okay, thank you. So we've already gone to members of the public on this item, and?
I think there was no comment.
Right, okay. So, so I thought that all of the, the changes to Exhibit A, which weren't required for SB 450, I'm sorry, were included in Attachment D.
D, yeah.
Okay, so, but we have this one item with regards to the sideways-facing doorways versus you need to have it a forward-facing entranceway. But that's, that's in the, the red line, correct?
Right, that, that is, and that is, again, moved from our current SB 9 standards, and that's why it's still included in this.
Okay, and then you have the extra ones. Okay. And the philosophy behind having it in SB 9 was because that would look like the other residential homes in a neighborhood if there was to be ministerially-approved SB 9 project.
Generally, as well as it aligning with our general plan.
Okay. Okay. Because I, my house happens to have one of the sideways facing doors, and I have always preferred that it was not, that it was facing the street, especially if you're decorating and whatnot. It's kind of uninspiring to hang a wreath that no one sees. So...
I think you make a good point. So, SB9 projects are going to be streamlined. That means, therefore, you are strengthening the objective standard, because all those projects can be streamlined. Therefore, we need tighter standard when it's streamlined. But maybe for a project that's not streamlined, we could consider a side entryway depending on the architecture design. So, is it possible to allow a discretionary approval to consider side way entrance since discretionary, the overall project and aesthetic could be considered?
Yeah. I think this gets back to really the core of SB450 is that you have to treat all of these alike. If it's an R1 property that didn't go through an SB9 process, you're treating them alike now.
So, it doesn't allow, we have to tighten everything we can, even if we want to allow flexibility for discretionary project, we are not allowed to now?
You either can tighten it or you can loosen it, but it has to be equal for all, is what the standard is now. That's essentially been the state law since January 1.
I see. Okay. So, basically discretionary project also needs to comply with only objective standard, no discretionary standard allowed.
Correct.
Okay. And, okay, any other comment, Councilmember Fruin?
So, these standards would also apply to a duplex that is built in a, using SB9 on a single-family lot site, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, if the standard about porches and entryways were applied, then a duplex that shares a wall would have to have both of the entryways facing the street?
Yes. And I believe there's language, if it's on a corner lot, you'd have the entrance facing each way. So...
Okay. I mean, one of the things that that strikes for me is that a lot of our duplexes are not obvious as duplexes because the doors face sideways. The duplex I live in has a sideways facing door. You can, it looks like a single-family home from the street because there's only one door that you can see. Many of the other duplexes that are on that same street, they have effectively a small courtyard, and the two doors face each other. You don't see any doors at all. And I think that we should be encouraging that form of structure rather than forcing everything to be on the outside.
I agree with Councilmember Fruin. I think, so is it possible that we, I think it makes sense for duplex, because I have seen development in San Jose where the whole house looks like a single-family home, but they are four units. Some of the doors are on the side, but overall, it looks like a single-family home, some doors. So, it really looks better for the neighborhood. So, I think it makes sense if you have duplex, one door facing from, the other door can face to the side. So, can we find a way, maybe we can give direction for Planning Commission to consider an objective standard to allow side entrance when we have duplex or complexed kind of development. So, only one unit needs to be facing front.
Yes. Just if I could clarify, if we wanted to draft that, then it would say regardless of whether it's a corner lot or not, the duplex, you would have an entry facing the street, not necessarily all entries.
Yeah. That makes sense.
Okay.
Right? So, it seems like we have, we would likely approve the...
Recommended action.
The recommended action, but then we are giving direction to Planning Commission that to reconsider Exhibition D and also definition for the far calculation, considering between purely residential, single-family home versus potentially mixed use, to find something that makes sense. So, it doesn't get abused. And then the curb cuts, potential grandfathering to allow oversized vehicle to be parked on site, so they don't occupy public streets. And then potentially to consider, yeah, not, when you have multiple units, just one of the door facing the front. So, we get actually a more uniform, single-family looking home. Yeah. Any other comments?
I mean, I would be supportive of all of that except for any ongoing appearance of this Section A especially, I'm sorry, Section 6A of 19.28.110. I just don't think that it's meaningful, and I don't know why we're imposing this standard.
Oh, which one?
That's the entryway standard.
Oh, I thought we are asking Planning Commission to reconsider that.
I think we certainly should, but it sounded like you wanted to adopt the staff recommendation, which would be to move forward with this.
I think it means we move forward for this version now, and then Planning Commission can modify something we adopt today.
I would simply strike it today and ask them to specifically consider this standard.
Okay. So, strike the, let me find that again. Which page was that?
It's at the bottom of page 25.
25. 25. Oh, yeah. So, we, so before it was, are encouraged, and this is now changed to is required.
Correct.
Staff, if we make a record, if we change and implement that recommendation, will we be out of compliance with 450?
No, we would not be.
Sorry. Pardon. Through the mayor, we're on page 25 of 61. Is that correct?
Attachment B, page 25.
What's the PDF at the bottom of that?
Attachment B.
What's the PDF number at the bottom?
It's 25 of 56.
56. Is it of B? Okay. 25.
It's number six.
What if we just then do say is required for at least one unit?
I agree with you, Mayor. I don't, I think it's a good compromise that at least one of them is street-facing.
Yeah.
If the other ones are not, I think it, yeah, I think that's a decent compromise there.
Through the mayor? I mean, so, let's take the example of Councilmember Fruin's duplex. Those all, the doors face each other. You and I walked that on the road that we looked at. These are, you know, they have the garages on the side with the, you know, garages are on the side like this, and then they go into a courtyard, and the front doors face each other, but they don't face out onto the street. That's a design choice for the property and the developer. I mean, I feel weird trying to impose the front door thing on everyone like an HOA.
Through the mayor, for that particular design, you would very simply create a, actually, a door which makes the courtyard more secure, but you would create a doorway into that courtyard area. But you're talking about a new development, which would be most likely a teardown of what you're looking at and starting from scratch.
Can we at least grandfather the ones that are in play?
Why would those need to be grandfathered? They're, why would, why would the homes that are already existing on Bolinger need to be grandfathered in?
Okay. I think, let's wrap it up. So, for this version, let's just say is required for at least one unit. But then we direct the Planning Commission to reconsider if there might be situation that's design, design-wise, it might make sense to, for the front door to not always face in front. Maybe if we can objectively describe those conditions, then maybe we can come back and specify those objectively, so we permit them when reasonable.
I agree with the mayor, but we do have a lot of homes in Cupertino that don't have a front door facing the front street.
I know, but right now, I think I don't have enough information to really say. So, that's just approved what we have now.
I'm okay sending it back. I'm just saying that this is not like anything new. I mean, we have tons of those. I mean, when we walked all the homes, I mean, there's so many where, you know, it's off to the side, it's off to a corner, it doesn't necessarily face the front, because the lot size limitations on a 3,000, 5,000 square foot lot actually may force you to do that from a design consideration.
I know, but then once we relax it, it's harder to put back the restrictions. So, I would rather that's approved what we have now, and then get more clarity on how we can relax it, on what condition. Yeah. Ben?
Call for a vote.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Real quick, Mayor and Vice Mayor and councilmembers, just want to provide one clarification. This particular section applies if you're demolishing and rebuild, right? So, the example that we've been hearing, if you're just going to be modifying your existing duplex, you wouldn't be forced to relocate your front entrance?
Oh.
Just clarifying.
Yeah. I think that's clear.
Okay, thank you.
That's clear.
Clear for the remodel. It's just the rebuilds. There's so many of them.
Yeah. I think I do see that. I've seen some rebuilds. They have two houses on two sides, and even four units facing each other. But it's true, that kind of house, the look of the neighborhood will be changed, because, which is the reason why we discourage flat lot, right? So, we need to think a bit more, because we do want the neighborhood character to still be retained. So, I think that's, think a bit more. Maybe the Planning Commission can look at different scenarios and see what makes sense.
If I can ask one last question of staff on the topic, to explore a point that Vice Mayor Moore made. If you had a gate, for example, that led into a courtyard, would that count as a sufficient entry feature that would meet this requirement? Or would it not? Because it does talk about it being an entry door.
I think that would be up for discussion.
Most of the items are like that.
Okay. So, it's not necessarily clear?
It is clear, meaning that the door itself and the feature itself would need to be, sorry, I misinterpreted. I assume for your future purposes, that could be a further discussion point, if that's what you're...
Yeah. I'm just trying to figure out, would a gate that looks like a door at the front, would that count for this purpose if it led into a courtyard? Or would it not because it's not a door to an internal building?
Right. So, for what's in the recommendation currently, it would not count.
It would not count?
Correct.
Okay. On what basis would it not count?
That would not be an entry feature, and the entry door itself would not be oriented.
Okay. So, that's not a valid option for this, then?
Right.
But a porch and a patio would be, would count as entry feature.
That would count for the purposes of addressing the need or the requirement for a porch or patio. That's part of that requirement. And then, as Councilmember Fruin mentioned, there is a separate requirement that that feature itself be oriented towards the street as well as the door.
I think 6A is what requires the door.
Oh.
6 itself gives the leeway of porch, patio, or entry feature, but 6A limits it to the front door facing.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
So, was that your motion, Mayor? Because I'm ready to second it.
Yeah. So, my motion is to approve the staff recommendation, but for this item, page 25 of Attachment B, we are adding is required for at least one unit.
Thank you, Mayor. I second that. And this would go also with the other items that you suggested for the Planning Commission to talk about this, because there will be a second round of changes that will come.
So, include the directions that I mentioned earlier to refer some items for Planning Commission to consider.
Thank you. And, you know, living in a neighborhood which has the gated courtyards and front-facing courtyard gates, there's, I've, over the years, since I've been there like 30 years, I've heard a lot of comments about that. I would, I'll talk to staff about it and what people think for what looks inviting, what doesn't look inviting in the neighborhood and people's perceptions of the homes when they have those gates. Be happy to provide that.
Okay. Let's vote.
Through the mayor on the discussion point on this, what is inviting or non-inviting is sometimes the feature. Sometimes you do not want that to be inviting, and that's why you said it that way. And sometimes you do want it to be inviting, because that's how you want your house. And I think that's a personal preference. We should not be imposing on votes. But just on a point-of-order perspective, what are we voting for at this moment? So, if we vote yes, we are basically saying we're taking this, but Planning Commission come back and fix Section 6. Is that what we're saying?
So, the motion on the table is the staff recommendation with the minor change for page 25, that we are saying a front, a front door entry is still required for at least one unit for now. And then Planning Commission will reconsider potentially the, any object, potential objective standards where front door may not be required, and still consistent with our general plan.
And for the purposes of SB450 is what we're doing.
And, yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're all clear on what we're voting for.
Okay. Any other question on the motion? If Councilmember Fruin, you have question on the motion, I think we should clarify question on the motion. If that's no question, then let's vote.
Okay.
I do have a substitute motion, which would be, the motion is proposed by the mayor, but striking proposed change 19.28.110, 6A.
Which is that? Which page?
That is the, the page that we've been talking about, page 25.
Oh, so striking...
Just striking the changes.
Just the one line?
The proposed changes. I am suggesting that they be struck.
It remains are encouraged?
Correct.
So, let me just show the page. So, the substitute motion is, we still say, just change is required to are encouraged or is encouraged.
And without the green text below it.
Or the green text will be strike also?
May I ask, Staff, if we go back to the are encouraged language, does that comply with the objective standard that you were working to implement?
We wouldn't be able to apply that to SB9 projects.
Understood.
And then I also would just want to clarify, there are subpoints B through D as well on the next page, with those also be included in the strike, just to clarify.
Yes.
We're striking 25, 6. Is that what it is?
Correct.
Striking, so all of this green will be strike. And how about E? This would all, do we...
So, to revert that back to what it previously was for R1A zones, we would reinstate that text, because it had previously been moved, because it would have been repeated.
So, we are not changing E, right?
So to revert that back to what it previously was for R1A zones, we would reinstate that text because it had previously been moved because it would have been repeated.
So we are not changing E, right?
E again, the, the text would be re-added. Right now where you see the green strike throughs, that green strike through would be removed and it would remain as is, meaning that that text would be...
So we would restore E, so that's this whole item?
Correct.
Every subitem under item six would be, would not be changed.
Correct.
And then do we still direct the planning commission to reconsider this item?
Yes, I'm, I'm happy to have them focus on it.
Okay, so we, it's, so the substitute motion is let's not change item six for now, keep the original language as is and refer, the planning commission will consider this and bring, bring us their recommendation for this whole section.
Yes.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
Did the planning commission already review this?
Right, this was included in the ordinance.
So they've already looked at it and they did not want to make changes to it. They weren't interested in that. Okay, and that, and that makes sense.
They have a discussion on this specific point?
Not the specific one.
So it seems to make more sense, Mayor, to send it back to, I, I'd like to your request. I think it's more tasteful and the planning commission can have a discussion about whether or not they agree with that as well.
Because if, if Councilmember Fruen didn't bring it up, I wouldn't think about that. So maybe planning commission now can rethink this. Okay, so the substitution motion, any question on the substitute motion? Councilmember Wong?
I'm, I'm happy to second the substitute motion, but I have a problem with seven too, with garage doors, because we have a lot of homes in the area that have three, we have three cars, they have three car garages. So what are we saying? We're going to eliminate three car garages on a frontage? Like, this is like, this is like Gestapo HOA rules. I mean, it's the city, the people are going to build what they need to build. I'm not saying let's go to Houston with no zoning, but this is kind of crazy, right? We're getting really specific here, so.
Are you proposing, I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, through the mayor, are you proposing an additional friendly amendment to strike seven?
I would like to propose a friendly amendment to strike seven.
I will accept that.
Okay. And the planning commission will reconsider this item, not just strike it. I mean, we are sending for the planning commission to reconsider.
I'm so construed, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, okay.
We are respectful of what planning commission has suggested, but we'd like them to look at number six and seven again.
Through the mayor?
Yeah.
So to summarize, we can have seven garage doors facing the street and no front entrances with these proposed changes.
I think there are, there are other concerns, but we don't have time to discuss today. That's have, any concern that you have, um, this maybe send it to the planning commission? How do we send comment to the, any concern for them to consider? If individual council member has a specific concern that they would like the, all the planning commission to consider, how do we?
You could send written communication from specifically yourself into the planning commission when the thing is agendized?
Okay, so that won't be considered influencing planning commission, right?
Or send it to the city manager.
Yeah. Or send it to the city manager to be passed to planning commission?
I would need to look into whether that would be influencing the planning commission. I mean, if you're an individual city council member, you know, speaking in your individual capacity as a citizen, I just need to look into that.
Through the mayor, do we have the chair of the planning commission or through the city clerk anywhere in the room or online?
City clerk is here.
Do we have the chair of the planning commission?
The chair of the, the planning commission is online and has his hand up.
I can't see that.
Oh.
Can we, can we call him just to?
I think we'll figure out how to come in later, okay? We'll figure that out with the city manager and city attorney and we will notify everyone. I think that's just co...
Pardon, Mayor, real quick, may I ask a question of the city attorney? So if, if this is approved, and this is our first reading and then you have a second reading, so someone can apply under those rules, get a ministerial approval for the scenario I just described. So because they're not limiting the number of garage doors which are street facing to two, you could foreseeably have seven garage doors facing the street. There's no upper limit from this change and there would be no street facing entrances. So basically you'd be looking at a giant, you know, basically a break shop facing the city street and for as long as that ordinance was waiting for the planning commission to make any changes to it, all of those projects could be ministerially approved. Would that be a fair assessment?
I think we would just state that the current rules would apply until the second reading of whatever is adopted here takes place.
Yeah, the current rule is there is no objective standard, so they can do whatever you just said already.
So I, I don't think I would be voting for this. Well, I know I wouldn't be voting for this because we don't know how long it's going to take for the planning commission to come around and say, we want you to change, change that, that ordinance that you just got your second reading on. So this is going to march through to a second reading without anything, any information from the planning commission and feedback about, about it. Is that correct?
That was correct.
That's what I'm afraid of.
So what we are taking out is just we would still have the current rule, which has been ineffective since January 1st, when SB, whatever number I keep forgetting, has been enacted, where we don't have objective standard and then people can do whatever they want. So we aren't really, yeah, we, there is a delay of implementing stronger standard for this particular section, but I'm okay with delaying two more months since it's been nine months where, where there is no standard anyway, right? Is that a correct characterization?
I believe so.
Yeah, so I'm, yeah, I think it's okay. That's, but it's better we have a more thorough understanding if we are making a stronger standard what it is, yeah.
So process question, have we accepted the amendment from Councilmember Fruen? Are we still deliberating on that one?
As a, as a point of information, so I made a substitute motion, you seconded it. I added some content from you that was construed as a friendly amendment and also from the mayor. And so if we want to vote, now would be a good time.
So we can vote on the substitute motion now, which is that we take out all of the modification in item six here, so refer to the original language. And item seven, refer to the original, which means it doesn't exist. But we, my amendment is to refer the six and seven to planning commission to think deeper. And any council member have specific concern for planning commission to consider on this item, we will figure out with city manager and city attorney on how we might convey that concern for them to consider. Okay, let's vote.
Yes, Mayor, this is for the substitute motion. Councilmember Fruen?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
No.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Motion carries with more voting no.
It's a surprising day that I, Councilmember Fruen agree. Okay, so now we have the 5G item?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. This is the, the small wireless facilities in public right-of-way. These are municipal amendments to regulate the wireless facilities within city streets. And for this conversation, Chad Mosley, Director of Public Works, is joining us.
Hello?
Hey.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Chad Mosley, Director of Public Works. Tonight we're presenting a new ordinance and associated regulations that cover small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way. And I guess I would ask our friends in the back room to bring up my presentation, if you can see it.
I can share that presentation.
Yes, please. Thank you. If you would go to the second slide, please. Staff recommends that we conduct the first reading of the ordinance, adding city code, title, chapter 1430, small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way. Also adopt a resolution approving the regulations for construction, operation, and maintenance of small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way and define that the proposed actions are exempt from CEQA. Next page. With this presentation, I'll provide a quick refresher of the overarching information on what cities have the authority to do and where federal and state regulations have limited cities' authorities. And I'll discuss the requested revisions to the, to the preference list for small wireless facilities as well as other items included in the draft ordinance and regulations, which we believe will help to better serve the community. Next slide. Cities have been placed in a difficult position of ensuring compliance with federal and state regulations while also trying to serve their residents in the community. Federal and state, state regulations have given local governments the authority to establish aesthetic standards for these facilities and to manage facility placements to ensure public safety and to coordinate the use of the right-of-way. To manage the aesthetic impacts of these facilities, a local government is permitted to set reasonable design standards such as requiring screening of facilities and having equipment coloring match the existing poll. Cupertino has, has established a design standard for these facilities and we have required wireless providers to install facilities that match this standard. The image shown here is one such installation in Cupertino. Cities have very limited additional authority when it comes to permitting these facilities, which is discussed further in the next slide. So Cupertino has tried to better service residents by enhancing transparency, providing a robust notification process that includes the longest notification period of any city in Santa Clara County, by establishing permitting guidelines that are clear and work to minimize aesthetic impacts and providing an abundance of information and tools on its website, including an opportunity where residents can sign up to be notified via email of small wireless facility permitting activities. The ordinance and regulations being presented tonight include additional provisions that further strengthen the city's permitting process. These provisions were selected and carefully balanced to serve the community while also ensuring ongoing compliance with federal and state regulations in order to help keep Cupertino out of an expensive lawsuit. These provisions will be discussed later in the presentation. State and federal laws and regulations, including the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996 and provisions of the California Government Code and Public Utilities Code, govern how local jurisdictions may regulate wireless facilities, including those within the public right-of-way. A city's authority to regulate aesthetics is balanced against state and federal laws and regulations that limit the scope of local government action regarding wireless facilities and small cells in particular. A September 26, 2018 Federal Communications Commission ordered place, Federal Communications Commission order placed even stricter limits on local regulations. These limits were designed to facilitate rapid deployment of small wireless facilities and prevent constraints on carriers' abilities to provide a full range of wireless services. Cities are not permitted to regulate the placement of small wireless facilities based on concerns over health effects of these facilities and may not create regulations that have the effect of inhibiting a carrier from improving the quality of their service. The FCC has also set short shot clocks for review and permitting of small wireless facilities applications. That shot clock consists of a 90-day period for attachment of a small cell facility on a new or replacement structure. And just recently, the Environmental Health Trust submitted a letter urging the FCC to respond to the remand issued by the DC Court of Appeals in the Environmental Health Trust versus FCC case. This lawsuit challenged the FCC's decision to maintain existing electromagnetic, magnetic safety levels which rely on international, on the International Committee of Electromagnetic Safety Standard update that affirmed no changes were necessary. We're still waiting further information on this topic. Next slide. The city council has conducted prior study sessions for small cell wireless facilities in past years. At the December 16, 2022 meeting, council provided input on the draft ordinance and regulations. That input was, has been incorporated into the finalized ordinance and regulations provided. Anybody who is interested in reviewing the information that was presented previously may do so by accessing the city council agendas on the Cupertino webpage, or you can go to the city's small cell webpage at the link shown here. Next slide. The draft ordinance prepared by the city helps to ensure local control over the placement of small wireless facilities is retained to the greatest extent permitted under state and federal law. It also provides clear and enforceable rules that can be applied to network build-out. The ordinance includes input received from city council and it clarifies and includes the provisions listed here. First, it requires carriers to obtain a wireless right-of-way permit for any installation of a wireless facility in the public right-of-way. It authorizes the adoption of regulations to implement the provisions of the ordinance. The ordinance requires any revisions to the regulations other than minor modifications as defined to be approved by city council. The ordinance establishes an application procedure and requires that applicants provide notice to all residents and property owners within 300 feet of a small, of a proposed small wireless facility. It authorizes the city council to establish a fee for processing of wireless right-of-way permit applications. It authorizes the public works director to make findings to approve or deny wireless right-of-way permit applications and provides an administrative appeal of the director's decision. And it includes provisions for the revocation of permits and the removal of equipment following the revocation or termination of a wireless right-of-way permit. Next slide. The draft regulations provide more in-depth information regarding requirements and permitting procedures and includes the following provisions. It establishes specific application requirements, including requirements to evaluate alternative locations for proposed small, small wireless facilities and to prepare an RF compliance report for each facility. The regulations also incorporate RF testing requirements, which are currently incorporated into the city's master license agreements with, with provider, with wireless providers. It encourages a voluntary pre-submittal community meeting consistent with the FCC rulemaking. It authorizes the peer review of applicant submittals at the expense of the applicant. The regulations establish standard conditions of approval and establishes citing and placement preferences for small wireless facilities, which will be discussed further on the next slide. It includes detailed design standards, including standards for noise, landscaping, concealment, lighting, and facility size, and establishes a 1,000-foot separation radius between small wireless facilities from the same carrier. Next slide. That is the right slide. Let's go back one.
Go back.
Kirsten? The proposed regulations lay out a 12-tiered preference list. Tier one designs are designated as the most preferred and each successive tier to 12 is less preferred than the previous tier, with tier 12 being the least preferred designs due to the aesthetic impacts of these, that these facilities have. Tier one installations generally include proposals where new facilities are co-located with existing wireless facilities. Tier two locations are situated in mixed-use and non-residential areas. Tiers three through six generally discuss preferred loca- Tiers 3 through 6 generally discuss preferred locations within residential areas. Tier 7 sets a preferred 1,000-foot radius between facilities owned by the same carrier. Tier 8 provides setbacks from protected properties, and Tier 9 from occupied structures. And Tiers 10 through 12 discuss the least aesthetically appealing designs for facilities and establishes them as least preferred. This revised preference list was created to better serve the community and to have a greater impact on helping the city meet resident needs. Next slide. Shown here again are the recommended actions for tonight. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm here to answer any questions. I know there was a lot of information, so I'm sure there will be some.
Okay. Any question from council members? No question.
Yeah, I had a question.
Councilmember Mohan.
Thank you for your report, Director Mosley. I had a question about the appeal procedures. You've said if an applicant is denied a permit, that's sort of the end of the road. Or am I understanding this right? That's the end of the road for the applicant, that there is no appeal procedure? Or?
My understanding is the applicant can appeal a decision from the Director of Public Works, so there are appeal processes from both sides.
Okay. I see there's a red line. Which page is this? Page nine of the redlined version where section A, where you've said that any applicant whose permit application is denied, or any perimetee who is required to abandon facilities, may appeal such decision, but you've struck that out.
Page nine of the ordinance or the regulations. Well, if you look at the beginning of that paragraph, it does say "an applicant" or "any person," whereas previously it said "any person," so we basically combined that language into one. So you're looking on page nine, but if you slide up to the beginning of that paragraph at the bottom of page eight, it does provide the same process for both applicant and for residence.
I'm not understanding it. You're saying a person versus an applicant? So my question is, why would you strike out the sentence which says "any applicant who is denied"?
I think what we're stating there is that last sentence is actually included within the rest of the paragraph, and if I'm misreading that, maybe the city attorney can explain it, but I think what we're stating is that last sentence is being incorporated into the rest because of that. If you look at the very first part, it says "an applicant or any person."
Okay. So you've said -- you're saying that you've said it somewhere before, and this would be redundant?
Yeah, in that same paragraph.
Except I'm not seeing where that's originally said.
In that same paragraph.
Yeah.
If you look at the bottom of page eight.
Uh-huh.
At the top, we added "an applicant or any person entitled to receive notice may request administrative hearing to appeal the Director's decision." That sentence at the bottom was kind of redundant, and that's why it was removed.
Yeah. Basically, we added that the applicant into the same category as any person, saying that an applicant and any person can appeal, which meant we didn't have to include that longer sentence at the end of that section. So it was just made for efficiency sake in terms of description. So an applicant can still appeal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Then let's go to public comment.
Mayor, I currently see one member of the public requesting to speak virtually. Now I see two.
Okay.
Nori, followed by San Rao. Welcome, Nori.
Thank you for this opportunity. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Nineteen small cell towers were built by Verizon and AT&amp;T five years ago in 2020. I have not looked at the GIS map for a few years. Now GIS maps show so many small cell towers almost every other blocks. There are 134 active small cell towers, eight permitted, three proposed small cell towers now. Those 120 active small cell towers are Verizon. Only 13 are AT&amp;T, so 90% of small cell towers belong to Verizon. Why is that? Verizon using those small cell towers for internet instead of underground cable, just like AT&amp;T or Comcast? AT&amp;T cellphone -- I'm sorry. Does a small cell tower have a backup battery if there was disaster and the power outage lasts for days and all communication lines are cut off? Based on city staff report, the distance between small cell facility of the same carrier at 1,000 feet. So AT&amp;T T-Mobile can build within a Verizon 1,000-feet apart distance. It could be three carriers, small cell towers, or small facility within 1,000 feet. It could be small cell facility, every single electric pole in this case. Seems like no regulation how many they can build. This is not small cell tower issue, but question for Mr. -- Director Mosley. But T-Mobile macro cell tower behind the softball field in Memorial Park is under construction. It has three large antenna panels. It was built 2011, very old macro cell tower. It must be upgrading. Does city or wireless carrier send a notification to resident within that 1,500-feet radius for upgrading? There is no activation report to check out emission for this macro cell tower in GIS map, so we don't know what is emission is. Thank you very much. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Nori. Next, we have San Rao, followed by Venkatesan Ranganathan. Welcome, San.
Thank you, Mayor Chow, and council members. I actually, before I comment on this item, I want to remind the mayor that the council procedures manual allows the chair of the planning commission to comment on an item as a member representing the planning commission, not as a public. And therefore, on the prior item, I should have been given the courtesy to speak when I had my hand up all the way through, and especially when two council members noticed that. I would request council members to insist upon following the courtesy, especially when you offer that courtesy to the chair of the audit committee. The comments I had to make were relevant, and I want to thank Councilmember Fruan, and Councilmember Wong, and Councilmember Mohan for making a very apt motion, because that motion reflected the sentiment of the planning commission, which in fact very clearly stated that no change shall be made except for changes required for SB 450. And for the--
Mayor, this is not on topic of the item that we're discussing.
Yeah.
Thank you. I will come back to the 5G topic, but I did want to point out that the courtesy of allowing the chair to speak should have been allowed, and I would like to see that in future. On the topic of the 5G, I would like to request that the community noticing of 1,000 feet be followed. I believe that is being recommended for planning in other areas. The 1,000-feet notification, or at least a 500-feet notification, was used previously, and it had been reduced to 300 feet in planning. And so when we look at this 5G community noticing at 300 feet, which caught my attention, I'd like to ask that you consider raising that to the maximum amount possible, 1,000 feet or even further, because this has always been an area of concern from the residents that they were not informed, and so there is no reason to keep it at 300 feet. I would also urge you to consider whether this should be an item that should be under the jurisdiction of the planning commission. Under the prior council, when changes were made to the council, to the procedures manual, the charter was amended to take this item out of the planning commission's coverage. Up until 2022, the planning commission did hear items related to 5G, and so please consider that this should actually be heard by the planning commission, because as you just saw on the previous agenda item, we cannot rely on ministerial hearings when they do not reflect the will of people that have directed the staff to not bring certain things to council, and yet they showed up at council. And so please consider not allowing for ministerial or directorial approvals, but keeping this at planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Next, we have Venkatesan Ranganathan. Welcome, Venkatesan.
Good evening, council. The 5G topic has been raised. In fact, I was one of the first ones to bring it up with the council a couple of years ago, but the latest ordinance that is being presented today is not addressing some of the concerns. You know, we want to have better setbacks for the tower, from occupied structures, like what the other cities have adapted around the Bay Area. Like Los Altos, it's much longer than in Cupertino. It's 25 feet from a bedroom window, and that's not -- that's not correct, and that's not safe to do. And also, the -- what I would -- I had requested earlier during my presentation in front of the planning commission as well as council was, you know, there should be a way to monitor the progressive radiation inspections on an annual basis, because sometimes when they do the -- before activation, some of the radiation estimations were done, and then there were changes done to the cell from 5G plus 4G to 5G only with additional changes. So we would like radiation tests to be done more regularly. And also, that should be, you know, if there are radiation-affected, you know, structures, then there should be some mitigating things, like attenuators or something that the -- either the city or the vendor can provide. You know, those are all some of the immediate things I can think of, because this rollout needs to be done in a way that doesn't have future liabilities. So that's my -- yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item?
Okay. Thank you. Bring it back to the council. I apologize, Santosh. I think it was mentioned your hand was up, but I didn't click -- it didn't click on me that's planning commission chair, that we should have listened to you. Sorry about that. Next time, please, someone, if you remind me that we should allow the commission chair or designated to speak. So can we answer the questions from Nori?
And I guess--
Do you remember?
Well, I don't remember all of them, but I know one of them was.
She said 90% of the small cells are from Verizon.
And that's because 90%--
I don't know if it's accurate.
Yeah. 90% of the applications were submitted by Verizon. None of the other carriers have shown any real interest in installation of small cells at this point in time.
And it's because AT&amp;T has the fiber optic network, Verizon doesn't?
I think you're correct. I think much of Verizon's attempt to install the small cells within Cupertino was because they had a plan for their 5G home, which was their, you know, internet option for homes, and as stated, AT&amp;T does have their fiber network, which provides the same service.
There was a question about backup power?
There are no backup power units for these small cells. That would have required what we call street furniture, or basically large boxes at street level adjacent to each one of these, and, you know, where we were concerned about aesthetic purposes. So we basically recommended if you come up with an underground version, we would love to see battery backup, but just due to water infiltration, that hasn't been a viable option at this point in time.
And so there is really no limit on how many they can build. We only have regulation on how far apart they are.
That's correct.
And so other carriers, if they want to install new ones on the same pole, they can add, co-locate them to the same small cell.
These new regulations would recommend that they do so if it's feasible.
Okay. And so Venkatesh mentioned, is it possible to monitor radiation? Since it does change over time as equipment get older, maybe the -- there might be more radiation, plus as new equipment are added by different carriers. So how are we monitoring the radiation?
When a small cell is installed, we have them provide a report that takes measurements at that point in time, and if there's any significant modifications made to a small cell, we have them provide an updated report. As Venkatesh had requested, we do not do annual testing on this. I might look to the city attorney. I actually don't think it's permitted by the FCC, but I would have to defer to legal on that one.
What do you mean by -- what's considered major equipment up?
Installation of additional antenna or modification along those lines.
It was mentioned that we only require 25 feet from bedroom window, and other cities require more?
I know Los Altos had a larger setback. I also think they were litigated against, and I think their setback has been modified. I don't know exactly what that is. 25 foot is, you know, a fairly reasonable setback from houses, and to a certain extent, extending that starts to create pockets within the city where it's -- there's a possibility that, you know, we would basically be inhibiting wireless facilities.
I would also like to comment on that, if I may. That is listed as, what is it, number nine in a list of preferred locations, and so you would only find yourself installing there if there weren't these other nine available locations that would satisfy your needs. So it's not like the regulations are allowing the installers to always just put it within 25 feet of a home. It's just that if they're getting to the point where they don't have any other place they can put it to service that cell, if you will, then they can put it there.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Good to know. And someone, councilmember Wong, and then vice mayor.
To the mayor, and actually, I was going to ask a question to the city attorney as well. The regulations that we've proposed in place are aesthetic, and only aesthetic regulations. Is that correct?
It is illegal under federal law to take into consideration the health impacts of installing these small cells.
Got it. Just want to make sure. And we couldn't put anything to talk about measuring radiation in any of these ordinances because we're focused on the aesthetics. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to be clear. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So I would have liked in the report, and I actually would lean towards requesting that there be a comparison between what were guidelines that we had previously to what is going to be a new ordinance, and have it tabulated, such as what I'm seeing for public noticing in the guidelines was 500 feet, and then in the ordinance, if I'm reading it correctly, is now 300 feet. That's an example, and I thought that the planning commission should have been allowed to have this discussion years ago, so I do appreciate the chair of the planning commission mentioning that they could-- mentioning that, that they could be looking at this particular item. And I lean towards sending it back to the Planning Commission and requesting that staff would create a table showing the changes between the current guidelines and the, the various categories which have changed to what is in the ordinance now. And just a little bit of history for why we, we decided to go towards an ordinance. It's, with so many different categories, it's not, it, it isn't as easy to follow along with this ordinance as what we had before. And I do remember seeing the map with regards to coverage and what happens if they're not allowed to have their, the, the 5G small cell as close together as they were asking. So even that, I'm not clear about. I think you're, you've moved it up to 1,000 feet between the towers. It's, it isn't super clear to me about that. And I just punched in some addresses to see what their coverage is looking like. Because I think that it's been pretty misleading to the public to call it the 5G network, when really it appears that it was about getting Wi-Fi because they were really behind the other providers for having internet service at home. And unfortunately, our city, compared to others, ended up with this, this rash of these, these poles throughout, which I, you know, I hope someday that we can remove them and declutter the, the city, and that there's something else that is much smaller, that's able to provide the service that they're hoping to. So my preference actually is that we send this item back to the Planning Commission with the, the before and after effects of this ordinance. So it's made very, very clear. I feel uncomfortable agreeing to all these, these changes without having some diagrams and all of the, the background information which we had had previously when the guidelines were adopted.
Okay. Anyone else would like to comment? If not, I have some. I think Santosh mentioned, asked why the notification radius was three, is 300 feet? As I remembered, it was longer, 1,000 feet maybe? And then we were told that in other notification radius was 300, and we need to be consistent. So we changed it to 300. But in, in our work program this year, we do have an item where we are looking at whether we should increase notification radius from 300 to 500 feet or 1,000 feet for development projects. Or if we increase that, I guess it will be applicable for the 5G installation. So that's something, maybe when it comes to the Planning Commission, they can make a recommendation to the council. So are you thinking of not approving this virgin and send it back? Or do we approve this virgin and then refer it back for potential revision?
Mayor, as to the, as to the noticing, when I look, going back to that item, when I look at the guidelines, page nine from the 2020 guidelines shows they're looking for a copy of a letter to be mailed to residents that owner live within 500 feet of proposed location. So it looks like we're actually decreasing than the, the prior noticing requirements, unless there was another addition of these guidelines that I don't know about. But I think that it just.
If I may?
Yeah, please.
This was discussed at the December meeting in 2022. And Chris Jensen at the time had indicated that if we're treating these permits differently than we would treat similar permits, such as our planning permits, there may be an opportunity for litigation. So if we modify our planning permits to 500 or 1,000 feet, we could modify these regulations to kind of be consistent with that.
So, City, do you agree with that?
I do. I agree that at the city council meeting in 2022, the final decision was to have it be consistent with our other noticing radii, and that's why we chose 300 feet. And I agree with what Director Mosley is suggesting, that if we change those others, then we could change this one too.
So can, maybe we should just agendize an item where we change all notification period? I think 3,000, 300 feet is too short. So if we just change all to 500 or 1,000, independent of the, the other, the work program item, but let's just change that. Is that doable? Can we do that? Or do we need any other assessment?
I think it's doable. I'm not sure you mean by any other assessment?
Do we need CEQA or something?
Oh, no, I don't think you need CEQA.
Okay.
Mayor, I was just gonna ask, i- if it is a work program item, I would, I need clarity on what, how to treat it differently, I guess.
The work program item has other, has other components, like we would in, in, increase community meeting requirement for a development project. So the notification radius is just one small component of that. And, but this is, I, I think the notification radius is an issue that keep coming up since 2022, right? So maybe we can just fix it, independent of the work program item.
Yeah, one thing, and I will, I'm not gonna go too off-topic here, but let me go back and talk to staff, and maybe we can treat the work program item into little chunks, and then maybe tackle that one first.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, thank you. So, so Vice Mayor?
Mayor?
On council, oh, do we have Councilmember One? Maybe Councilmember One first?
Yes, please. I, while I agree with Vice Mayor Moore that it was important to have the Planning Commission look at this and have a comparison table, they are currently not set up to have jurisdiction to look at this issue. And this is an issue where we have put together some, I would say landmark legislation, which addresses the aesthetic issue, which we've been waiting for the last two to three years. We've gone through extensive legal review here, and it's currently in this body. And so while I believe future items that involve telecom or involve the wireless cells or the aesthetics of that should go to planning, I would like to see this passed today, given that this agenda item has been kicked around for the last six months, and really for the last two years. So that would be my preference.
Wait, so you would like to see this, the staff recommendation approved?
Approve it now. If you want to make a modification, go make a modification. We'll make a modification at a later point. Let's also make sure that planning has, has the ability, has this within their jurisdiction, which they should. We asked for it in the past, and it wasn't. But, but they should have that jurisdiction.
I'm a little confused. So you would like it to be the.
I would like to pass this today, and then in the future, let's address the fact that this should belong, this belongs in a, this is a Planning Commission issue.
So we approve this virgin today? Refer the item to Planning Commission to further study and consider the comparison table?
If there's future, yes, if there's modifications to be made, but at least.
And potentially simplifying categories? So it's easier to understand? Is that what you, what would you like to refer to the Planning Commission to consider?
Thank you, Mayor. So I would like them to do, see the, see the comparison table, and then I'm being told that there's improvements to aesthetics. So does that mean that the original schematic diagrams that we have already on the city website are, are no longer what they're going to be following? Because I would, that would be great. Because they were showing, you can have, if you're looking at the small cell design, you can have, it looks like two RR units on top of, of, of having the, I don't know what to call, what you, what you call the concealment shroud, apparently? So you've got, that's the thing on the top of the pole. So you're still, has, has that changed? Has this design changed?
That's not changed, no.
Okay, so the aesthetics of the pole and the allowable, because I was surprised when I saw the RR units, RRU units showing up on the pole. Was there any limit to how many in the, in the municipal code for how many of those could be installed on a pole?
It needs to match that schematic design. What you see is what you get.
Okay, but there's nothing, when I look at it, I'm not, I see 16 clear, top of proposed, bottom of proposed. I'm wondering if, if someone can interpret that and say, well, I can stack another two or three, as long as I'm 16-inch clear. And, you know, I think, I think I would want this, this schematic to actually show that that cannot be done. And by the way, what is, because there is a schematic elevation that shows no RRUs and at a pedestal base. So is that, is, what, what is the purpose of the RRU on that pole?
You're getting into some technical aspects that I may not be the best person to answer, but the RRU speaks to the actual antenna above.
Okay.
It's, it's part of the, the technology. They, they have to have some form of separation on those, apparently. You can't have them right on top of each other, but.
Okay.
We're getting into scientific.
Thank you. That was, well, that was one of the aesthetics that, that on the, you find these here and there. They're not on all of them. And it adds a lot of clutter to the design. So for, for that, with regards to aesthetics, there's no improvement on it.
So it's, thank you for the time check from Councilmember Mohan. It's 10:05. I think we do want to get through the other item today. And so that's, I propose that we just approve the staff recommendation today, because the staff really has worked hard on that. And thank you for all the hard work and, and then your expertise in the area. And we will refer the item also to the Planning Commission to consider the comments from this meeting. And, yeah, I think I won't summarize that. So that's my motion. And they can bring, if, if they're, they feel there is a need to modify the current ordinance, they can always make a recommendation to the council. Okay.
I, I'm, I'll second it for discussion purposes. Real quick question. Is there a difference between the distance between the poles from what we previously had? Because I'm seeing, I believe, 1,000 feet. And I, there was, I thought it was 300 previously. Has that been changed?
Yeah, it was 500 previously, and that has been increased to 1,000.
Okay, and that's 1,000 for the same carrier?
Same provider, yes.
Okay, and do we have anyone else other than Verizon that's using these concealment towers?
AT&amp;T has a handful.
Okay, do they intend to expand further, or do you have any? Do they intend to expand that?
I've asked them about that. They do not have any plans at this point.
Okay. And is there some reason why Verizon seemed to have targeted our particular city for these installation?
I'm not sure why us. I know they've been working with other cities to try and do the same thing. In fact, you know, a couple of years ago, we were having regular meetings with all of the various West Valley cities, Campbell, Sunnyvale, Santa Clara, and so on and so forth. I think at the time, the council direction was to work with Verizon and make it happen. So Cupertino did, and that's probably why it looks like we've been targeted. Because if, if you do recall, about seven or eight years ago, we had the worst cell service in the, in the South Bay, and we were the home of Apple.
It's 10:08. So Vice Mayor, do we intend to finish the last item, the JPA item today? If we want, we need to move on.
Okay.
So we can, we can ask questions offline and pass any concern you would like Planning Commission to consider through the city council or city attorney.
Sure. I do, since we're looking at art in lieu of fee, this is actually something, because the aesthetics impact was negative, that you could have gotten art in lieu of fee funds for, for this item. So that's something to keep in mind for the item moving forward, which will be on our agenda. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. And do we vote on that, unless you would like any amendment? Okay, let's just vote.
I'd like to call it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Councilmember Fruen?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, do we need a break? Or we just?
Just give him five minutes would be helpful.
Five minutes break. Okay. We'll come back. So it's 10:16. Should we just first vote to extend the meeting to 11 o'clock and aim to finish by then?
No, it's too much.
Yeah?
It's too much.
I think 10:45?
10:45.
You think we can't get done by then? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and for 10:45?
I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting to 10:45.
Yeah.
1:45 here in Baltimore.
So you are counting on no public comment? Okay, so we have a second. Let's vote. And let's vote. Oh, so we are extending the meeting to 10:45?
Mayor, who seconded?
Councilmember Wong.
Councilmember Wong moved it.
Oh, he, you moved it? Then, then I seconded.
Thank you. Councilmember Fruen?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay. So this is an item that I put on the agenda, because we, I think it's, the timing is important for us to propose this revision. So City Attorney, first, I'd like to double-check with you that our municipal code allow the mayor to, to agendize an item?
Yes, it's the mayor's prerogative to set the agenda and to agendize an item.
Okay. And in the, this item has a mayor's report where I outlined the reasons why I feel there strongly that there is a need to make sure cities association bylaws and agreement works for all the cities inclusively and fairly. So here, I'm sharing some slides that I have prepared. And I think cities association plays an important role. They have, they are a regional body comprised of 15 cities in the county. And member cities approve the agreement and the bylaws to join this association. They are meant to build consensus on regional issues, have a unified voice, and respect the principle of local control, which is included in their goal. Thus, the cities association should fairly represent all cities, not just a select few council members. And first, I'll review briefly the current bylaw and agreement specify the Board of Directors consists of one member appointed by each member city. And there is an executive committee consisting of five members. President, first Vice President, second Vice President, Treasurer or Secretary, or, and immediate past President, five members. And currently, the President must be a member of the Board. Board is appointed by a city. At least two officers must be members of the Board appointed by their respective city. However, the remaining. the board appointed by their respective city. However, the remaining officers, up to two may be any council member from a city regardless whether they, they are appointed by their prospective city to represent the city or not. That I find is pretty odd. And another strange thing is that Legislative Action Committee, also each member, each city appoints a member to serve on the committee. However, the chair is always, the committee is always chaired by the second vice president, who may or may not be appointed by their respective city at all. It might be just one member handpicked to serve. And they do not need to be a member of LAC, members selected by member cities to represent them. Then number seven is current law require election must happen in November, when most of the city actually appoint members in December or January. So that creates difficulty. And I did some research back in 2022, looked at all the minutes from past meeting to figure out who are the president, the first vice president, the five members of the executive committee. And then, as you can see here, the, the same caller are the same council member who have moved from one position to the next. Basically, most of people would be selected to be, to join this executive board, and then move up to, from treasurer to second vice president to first vice president to president, and then immediate president. So one person will be serving on the committee for five consecutive years, often regardless whether they are appointed by the city or not. And as a result, any year, usually there is only one opening for any other city to join because all the other four members are moving up in this succession. This is not written in the bylaw. However, this is a practice that has been going on since 2016, the formation of the Cities Association. I think I did the research in 2022, but thank Vice Mayor for completing the research for the last three years. So what I have mentioned is this unwritten practice that actually worsened the lack of fairness that's already in the agreement and the bylaws, where some members not only need, doesn't need to be appointed by their city, the executive committee, I think most people don't know how the executive committee selects next board members. Usually, the president selects three members to serve on the nominating committee. And the three members on the nominating committee usually are just three members of the current executive committee. So basically, they, the executive committee themselves select this one extra member they would like to add to their own elite group. And then this slate of candidates is presented to the board. The board usually just rubber-stamped and presented and, and approved the selected slate. Therefore, the reality is the current executive member handpicked one member to add as treasurer, and this member was, handpicked member will stay for five years. This member does not need to be even currently on the board or ever being selected by their city to represent them. So basically, someone outside of the city, an elite group, select a member from any city that they handpicked to join their elite group. This is very undemocratic. And I think I've mentioned the concerns. So two officers are not required to be appointed by any city. And the LAC chair, right now, the bylaw says it's just the second vice chair, whoever it is. Therefore, this member could be already, could be maybe a member that's not appointed by their city to represent them on either LAC or the board. And very likely, LAC might have two council members from one member city, with one of them serving as chair, giving one particular city much more power than other city. And the LAC chair has the power to determine what bills to put on the agenda to discuss and even often provide narratives to describe these bills. So the narratives often, since this may not, may or may not be neutral. And this really violates the practice, this creates conflict with the current bylaw, where one, there should be one representative from each member city. And because of, and the requirement to elect member executive officer in November doesn't really work well with how, as the cities appoint members to the board or the tour, to the LAC. So here is what we are proposing. First of all, the executive officers should be held by member cities, not individual council members. It shouldn't matter which member a city appoint to represent them. So if a city is selected to be on the executive committee, even if there might be a change, the city should have, be able to appoint another person to represent them. And all executive officers must be appointees or alternate over the board director representing the city. And second, the Legislative Action Committee members, each selected by their own city, should be able to elect their own chair, so that the chair is selected by the members. And then together, they can decide how best to set agenda and run select bills, rather than someone handpicked by the executive committee. Third is, we would like to propose that the exact months when the election for executive committee is not written in the bylaw, so that the board can have the flexibility to decide when to have the election, that might be more consistent with appointment by other board member. So these are the provisions that we are proposing. And there are, oh, so let me stop sharing here. And the proposed recommended action is like this. So this is recommended action from the, the mayor, council report from mayor. Number one is the three items that I just mentioned, revision to agreement and bylaw. Number one, number two, number three, which I just mentioned. And second recommendation is that we do an early appointment for the board of directors, since the election to the executive committee will happen still in November. So I think this provides a model, a best practice of, potentially, if we want to have election in November, cities can may, make appointment for their representative for 2026 earlier. In case of the election year, of course, the cities can select a representative that likely will continue in the next year to avoid any disruption, but it's up to each city. So number second would be a resolution to appoint Vice Mayor Kitty Moore to the board of director for the term for 2026. And the third is a resolution to nominate, to support the application of Vice Mayor Moore to be appoint, to be appointed to the executive board. Wait. Oh, sorry. So number two has a second portion, also endorsing Vice Mayor's candidacy in the election for executive officer, so that the executive committee consider a member selected by the council to represent them rather than someone handpicked by executive committee member. And then number three is just to authorize the current representative of the board to convey the message to the board that we have adopted the above two resolutions. And then attach this council report for their information. So that's my presentation. Oh, I think I forgot to share that screen. So this is a screen with the recommended action. That's in the council report by mayor. Okay, any questions? So, any questions? No question, we'll go to Councilmember Fruen.
Just a quick question of clarification of the City Attorney. There is a staff report that is appended to the rest of the materials for this item, but that staff report includes much of the same preambulatory information that is in the mayor's. So this entire item is brought to us at the mayor's behest. Yes, this, there is no recommendation from you as the City Attorney?
That is correct. This is the mayor's item.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. And then just for, in terms of process, of course Cupertino does not approve JPA agreement or bylaws. We propose it, and we hope that the board of Cities Association will consider and then adopt this revision, and then eventually each of the member cities will need to approve this revision. Yeah. And I think Vice Mayor has sent in a written communication with some more information, where you can see that in the past, there are only a few cities that have been represented on the executive committee. So it hasn't been really fair to all the cities to get a fair chance. Yeah, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. And thank you for the report and all of your work tracking the, the prior board members. I was unaware until a couple of weeks ago that, that the practice of basically just moving an individual up each year was their, their standard operating practice. I didn't, I didn't know that. I will, I'll share the screen, and I, I believe, Mayor, you're already well aware of this. So when you look at this chart on the top, what you're looking at is the year and for the executive committee, which city had a representative for that particular year. And, and one thing that's kind of interesting, and I don't know when this started, but all of the meetings are now held in Sunnyvale in their new city hall building, and they will be paying for Sunnyvale staff to be assisting, and then further for accounting work to be done there. It's, it's Sunnyvale. So if you look at this chart, what you'll see, Campbell's had two representatives since 2016. Cupertino has had six, but that's been among three individuals. Gilroy has had no one. Los Altos, you've got five. No one from Los Altos Hills has served on the executive board. And also Melpitas, big city, no one's been on the board from there, from the executive board. Monte Serena, I just said, two times, Morgan Hill. And, and for Morgan Hill, for, for having the meetings up in Sunnyvale, that's a long drive. And so what we're noticing is that Morgan Hill and Gilroy are leaving early from those meetings because they're having to travel so far to South County. Palo Alto, no one since 2018, big city there. And Santa Clara is a pretty big city, zero throughout this whole time. So what you do see is that there's an overrepresentation from Sunnyvale and, and Saratoga. And then in the next table, I'm showing who from, from each city served and how many times. So President Klein will, he's at seven, but next year, because of the way the process is, he'll be at eight because he'll be made the immediate past president. And so you can look at that. I tried to put it in order. And here's the same chart that the mayor shared. And you can see, for instance, if we track, if we track our, our current first VP, Wallya, you can see she was second VP, then treasurer-at-large, well, secretary treasurer. Some of the names have changed over the years. And then she'll be made president and then past, past president.
Sorry, just wanted to do a quick time check. We're 10 minutes.
Okay. So I think, I think everybody gets, gets the idea here. What we're looking at is no representatives from some cities and extreme overrepresentation from, from some cities in this group. And so it's, it's not democratic, inclusive, and fair as we would want it to be.
And for most people who are not in that elite circle, you didn't even know that this is a practice that's been going on. And then you are just being presented with, here is a slate of candidates recommended by the executive board. Most people didn't know, they'll just support, right? So, so we are just trying to outline for everyone, this is how things has been working. It's not really fair. Maybe we should be looking, thinking about how can we improve this to be more inclusive and fair to all council members and all the cities, and so that the Cities Association really represent all the cities. Let's go to public comment.
Mayor, I see two requests to speak virtually. Tracy K. and Sima Linskog. Welcome, Tracy.
Thank you. Speaking for myself only, I just wanted to briefly express my support for this agenda item. The Cities Association plays the important role of advocating for or against state-level legislature that impacts its member cities. And as such, we should want for its leadership to reflect its member cities. The changes council is asking for will help better bring that in line. Moreover, it's reasonable to expect that for any organization in which Cupertino and its taxpayers are paying to fund membership, that the organization should represent the will of its city council and ultimately the voters. Vice Mayor Moore was reelected in a very large margin by the voters. She has shown an ability to think independently and do deep research around legislature, and I have full confidence that she will be excellent on the executive committee. I'm not sure why the Cities Association executive committee might contain members not nominated by their member cities, but regardless, it's normal for organizations to continue to evolve to reflect changing needs. And this request feels like a natural next step, done respectfully and with the intent of continuing a strong partnership with the Cities Association. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tracy. Next, we have Sima Linskog, followed by San Rao. Welcome, Sima. And Sima, you may be having audio issues, so I will call on the next person and revisit, return to you. Welcome, San.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. I do support this, this, this agenda item, and I think that you've characterized it accurately. I also draw the analogy to the Stevens Creek Corridor Vision Study Project, which I have attended all the corridor meetings. And I've attended specifically meetings that were chaired or attended by predecessor of council, or Vice Mayor Moore. And then I attended when Vice Mayor Moore attended. And I could see the difference in representation for Cupertino. And I think it's really important that the will of the voters of the city be reflected in the composition of these joint committees, so that there is not a bypass of the local- in the composition of these joint committees so that there is not a bypass of the local will of the people and the voter populace. And we have already seen that with projects that involve these multi-city corridor committees or bodies, where a vote of the body and a majority of that vote may impose a decision or a recommendation that really does not reflect the will of the voter base. And so I'm asking you, if this change is not acceptable to the broader organization, can you exit this organization? Because we do not want to be subject to the will of a broader group that does not reflect our votes. And unfortunately, what we have seen is that we have an engaged voter base in Cupertino. Other cities are still in the process of getting there. In fact, we've often had questions from people in Campbell saying, how do we do what you're doing? And, and so we are in a situation where unfortunately, not all voters in all cities have the same level of engagement and the representation varies. And so we ask that you represent Cupertino with total fidelity and I have full faith in Vice Mayor Moore. I've seen her represent us in fantastic ways on the ACB Corridor. And I ask that you move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, San.
Before we go to the next public speaker, perhaps we need to extend the meeting.
So we have one more speaker. Okay. Then we need to move to extend the meeting to 11. So just to be safe.
Moore, second.
Okay. Let's vote.
Councilmember Fruen.
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan.
Aye.
Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Aye.
Mayor Chow.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, city attorney. So the next speaker.
Apologies, Mayor. Well, Seema Linskog, welcome, Seema.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Ah ha, okay, all right. So Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, I'm on the planning commission, but I'm speaking tonight as a resident. There are several major problems with this agenda item. At a high level, it seems like an elaborate and complicated way to oust Councilmember Fruen from the Cities' Association and force them to elevate Vice Mayor Moore to replace him. Problem number one is that this proposal really seems to arise from a personal grievance. It appears driven by animosity towards Councilmember Fruen rather than holding the city's best interests at heart. Cupertino benefits from having two council members active in the leadership structure of the Cities' Association. Trying to force the disqualification of one of our city's council members by changing the rules would weaken our influence, not strengthen it. And it's really interesting to listen to the comments from Mayor Chow and the two speakers before me, somehow implying that Councilmember Fruen is somehow less representative of the city than Councilmember Moore, though they're both elected to the council by all of our residents. Problem number two is that influence really needs to be earned. Positions on the Executive Committee are won through trust and collaboration and partnership, not demands for rule changes. Problem number three is that Mayor Chow's proposal is damaging to Cupertino's standing. Amending the joint power agreement requires approval votes from two-thirds of the 15-member city councils. That's a minimum of 10 city councils. Pursuing this would waste regional goodwill over a seat that could be earned through relationship building. It's also extremely unlikely that Mayor Chow can convince 10 cities to vote in support of her proposal, making this whole exercise an unfortunate waste of time that only serves to damage our city's credibility and our standing in the region. Let's focus on doing what you were elected to do, which is to focus on making Cupertino a better city and on focusing Cupertino's relationships and regional influence, not weakening them through unnecessary conflict and personal grievances. Thank you.
Thank you, Seema. Mayor, no additional requests to speak for this item.
Thank you. I believe in doing what is right, even when it seems especially the established power, especially those people who are already in power, they of course will be against any change. But I think we are in a democratic society and this society really cherish people who ensure that we give everyone an opportunity and ensure representation is representing the entire city, not individual. And I believe my presentation from the beginning to the end, I did not mention any specific council member. This is really a principle. It's a principle issue. If we are, the council should not, there shouldn't be anyone who represents Cupertino without even being approved by the council. That simply is not democratic. It's not on any one person. It's that if we want an organization to work, the agreement and the bylaws have to have principle and have to be fair to everyone. Councilmember Fruen.
I think this is a really rather extraordinary item to have on the agenda. And I think that there's a fundamentalist understanding here of both what the role of the Cities' Association is and in particular what the Executive Committee's role is. Missing from the report, for example, is a number of things that are part of the Cities' Association's creation and purposes. For instance, to serve as a source of education, information and networking for officials from all cities in the county, to provide a forum for non-city individuals, groups and organizations in the private sector to address items of interest to Santa Clara County cities and to collaborate in such a way that is efficient, saves the jurisdictions the expense of individual effort and creates positive outcomes. There's a lot more here than just things that are inside lobbying activities that the organization engages in. And going to a single meeting makes that really clear. The Executive Committee is intended to represent the organization. When you are on the Executive Committee, you're not there to represent your specific city. There are rules in place to try to ensure that the Board maintains ongoing control of that entity. That's why three of its members have to be Board members. Overall, I just think this is extraordinarily unusual. I, I don't think I've ever seen a city adopt a resolution proposing to campaign for one of its council members to a regional body. And as for the notion that every single council member should have to have the imprimatur of its council in order to be able to participate in regional bodies, there are other structures where that's plainly not the case and it's plainly not the case by statute. For example, the City Selection Committee. You just apply. The only requisite thing that you have to fulfill is being a council member. It's really as simple as that. So I, I really don't understand why this is in front of us. It seems to be an awful lot of hyperbole and I think it's just a giant waste of time and I, I will be very surprised if the Board chooses to adopt it.
Vice Mayor and then Councilmember Mohan.
Thank you, Mayor. So in order to attempt to have this agendized by the Board, it would go to the Executive Board, which puts Councilmember Fruen in the strange position of being on the Board that would be deciding whether or not the, the membership Board would even discuss this item. So you have that particular conflict. And then the next conflict you have is that we have our own Legislative Review Committee of two council members, which has a platform which we adhere to and we, we've, between the two of us, it's Councilmember Wong and myself, we decide what positions we recommend for the, the council to take and for the mayor to send letters to our legislators. But with regards to the LAC, there is not an agreed-upon platform from the 15-member cities. Whoever is decided to be the second VP and we saw the circulation. So what actually happened there was a bit of an anomaly. So ordinarily, it would have, it was, it was past president, Hungway was put in the past president position in 2023 and then put in the following year, the Treasurer position. And then the following year, the second VP was, it was basically swapped out for Councilmember Fruen, which was a slightly unusual move.
Do you want to share the chart?
Sure.
Or I can share.
Yeah, that would help. And so what happens when you, when you go to an LAC meeting is that the chair makes the decision about what items are going to be discussed or not discussed. A, a good example there would be SB 79. No position was taken up there, but our city took up a position on SB 79, which came through the Legislative Review Committee and we sent off letters. And that one in particular, while some said, well, this doesn't affect, SB 79 doesn't impact Cupertino at this time. However, and I really appreciate Chair Rao mentioning the, the Steering Committee because if those changes had gone through, it would have subjected the Stevens Creek Corridor to SB 79 and, and you know, we were very well aware of that. But that being said, the, the regional body as a whole, this is an important item, SB 79. And if you, you can make the argument, well, at this time Cupertino didn't need to take a position. Sure, you can make that argument. However, it does matter to Sunnyvale, Santa Clara, Campbell, Palo Alto. And it was chosen by the chair to not take a position on that item, even though our own city did.
That's not true.
Yeah, that is.
No, that's not true. The, the organization chose to take no position.
Through the chair, you're butting in and I have the floor. So SB 79, we did not take a position on. In the very first meeting, we were requested, each one of the council members that were serving on the LAC, we were requested to submit bills of interest. And I provided the list from CalCities, which highlighted SB 79 as being a very important bill for this session. So that is the situation that you have when you do not have a chair of a committee appointed from the members of that committee. So you've got an outside person who's able to set the agenda, decide unilaterally what bills get discussed. And we also had issues where information was, was not being provided to the council members until two hours before the meeting. So we didn't even know which bills were going to be discussed. The meeting minutes were called action minutes, but they weren't showing what the actions actually were, what actions were taken. And I had to bring that up and get that corrected. And there was another member from the council, from Campbell, who brought up the potential Brown Act violations going on at those meetings. So that's, you know, going on a tangent there, but there, there are issues when you don't have the chair being appointed from the actual committee. And this isn't done in other bodies. So when you go and you serve on the Policy Advisory Committee for VTA, you, you appoint the chair, you appoint the vice chair at the start of the year. This is the same for Valley Water and the same for the, the JPA, for the Santa Clara County Library District. So I don't, I don't quite understand why this was set up this way. It's clearly not representative of the entire county and because we have Gilroy, Los Altos Hills, Milpitas, Monte Serena and Santa Clara. Why, since 2016, not a single member of those cities has been appointed?
Uh huh. Thank you. Thank you for pointing out that actually it seems the Cities' Association already kind of followed the one, the first proposal that I have proposed. On the Executive Committee, it should be the member city representing. So when Councilmember Wei, former Councilmember Wei couldn't represent, they picked another council member from Cupertino, just not the, not asking the Cupertino council to determine which one would represent us. All we are asking now is you, the members on the Executive Committee should be city members and let the city decide who should represent the city. And in the interest of time, we have five minutes. I know Councilmember Fruen would like to speak, but I would like to make a motion first that we approve the recommended action that, which I have shown earlier.
Mayor, I didn't get a chance to talk.
Yeah, okay. So I know Councilmember Fruen really want a rebuttal. So I would like to give a notch as, would you like to?
Sure.
To be able to do that first?
Yes.
So here is the recommended action that I'm making this motion. May I have a second?
Mayor?
Yeah.
I don't mean to cut off you asking for a second.
Yeah.
I just want to point out that it's 10:56.
Yeah.
So we will need to extend the meeting. It's that 11 o'clock time.
So.
And you'll need to extend, what is the word?
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules.
Yes. And then you'll need to specifically state what item you plan to finish.
Okay. So, well, suspend, suspend the rule and then extend the meeting to 10 after 11. May I have a second?
Moore, second.
Okay, let's vote.
Councilmember Fruen.
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan.
Aye.
Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Moore.
Aye.
Mayor Chow.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so I will just make the motion to approve the recommended action that is shown on the screen and that's in the council report by mayor.
Moore, second.
Thank you.
I do want to point out that, you know, while I appreciate the, the endorsement, personally, I would want to see somebody from Gilroy, Los Altos Hill, Milpitas, Monte Serena and Santa Clara get on that Executive Committee because they've been left out in the cold far too long. And I think it's really unfortunate and, and I think that Saratoga and Sunnyvale have truly been overrepresentative, overrepresented for far too long and it needs to be corrected. And I hope that there are some policies that are put in place to ensure that the entire county, that all the cities are having some representation on, on the Executive Committee. I think it would be really helpful and, and I think that the Executive Committee needs to get some feedback from, from all these cities.
Thank you. So Councilmember Fruen.
I'll try to make it brief. I think that the exchange that you witnessed here underscores the comment from the public that this is more about animosities and personal grievance than it is about actual change or what really matters in representation at the Cities' Association. That's point one. Point two, all of the cities recently went through the process of adopting these bylaws of joining the JPA in its current form because this used to be an unincorporated association. We've all had the opportunity to redo and rethink this set of rules in the immediate recent past last year. So I don't know quite why all of this is now something that one city wants to offer and claims that all these other cities that may not be applying at all for positions on the Executive Committee are somehow unrepresented. It's just not how the organization functions. What you're seeing instead is the fact that the organization cares a great deal about succession and institutional memory so that meetings can run well, so that you have some sort of continuity from year to year. That's not abnormal. I really don't know what it is that we think we're accomplishing by doing this. I, I think that we'll simply wind up insulting a whole bunch of people. And then lastly, with regard to this issue involving SB 79, I'd encourage anyone else to go back and take a look at the data. to go back and take a look at the day that the Legislative Action Committee considered that issue at the Cities Association. It was on the agenda. The Cities Association LAC took no position on that piece of legislation. There was disagreement in the body. That's the way that that's supposed to work. Councilmember Moore chose to leave that session and did not vote. If she had been there, maybe there would have been a different result. I don't know. She chose not to.
Thank you. Councilmember Mohan?
Just a quick comment. I've been on the board for two years, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that this, the Cities Association Joint Powers Authority, is an independent entity. It has its own structure. It has its own bylaws. Its purpose is to collaborate on issues, come up with common solutions. And each member representing each of the 15 cities has a seat at the table. Currently, our Vice Mayor is our representative on the board. So, well, first of all, I'm not sure why we need to appoint her for the next year that is likely going to happen. You know, you have that choice mayor, so she's on the board now, and she is likely going to be our representative on the board for next year. And as our rep, she can propose putting any of her recommended changes on the City Association agenda. There is a process. Yes, you go to the president of the Executive Committee, he collaborates with the executive director, very much like it is here. The mayor and the city manager come up with the agenda. And it's wonderful that we are trying to sort of carry the mantle for all these other so-called unrepresented cities. But the fact is, this information goes out to all the member cities and all the council members, every elected person, asking them to express their interest if they want to serve on any of these positions. If Palo Alto or Gilroy hasn't chosen to do so this year, or maybe the last year, that is their prerogative. It is, I'm not seeing any sense of being deliberately shutting these cities out. So as, coming back to the Vice Mayor, she can propose putting these recommended changes on the Cities Association agenda. There is a process, and that is how it is done. So I would not oppose the Vice Mayor if she chooses to follow these procedures, but I will oppose the intent of this agenda. Firstly, it's not our place to be debating and proposing changes at our council meeting for an independent entity of which we are just one of 15 members. It is unproductive, it is irrelevant, and it's clearly a waste of our time. There is no precedent for changing the bylaws, and this, I will reiterate, is being driven by some personal agenda. We are unnecessarily provoking the cities. We have to work with these cities. We are unnecessarily provoking the cities by this action. We are not helping ourselves, and on the contrary, we are shedding, casting light on our city in a very negative form, and I strongly oppose that.
Yeah. Thank you for mentioning the process. In fact, I have reached out to the president, Larry Klein, two, three weeks ago, when we were, I was thinking about proposing revigils, and then learned the process of proposing agenda items. So I have requested for them to agendize a revigil for JPA, and it would be inappropriate for Vice Mayor to propose her own revigil at the board as one of the board members appointed by us. The process, as we are doing now, is whatever we are proposing is approved by our council. And so we are proposing this as a council, then asking our representative, Vice Mayor Moore, to bring it to the board for consideration. They can consider and then decide. And then I would also like to point out that in the resolution where we are supporting Vice Mayor to be serving on the Executive Board, I have mentioned that Vice Mayor has been selected by her fellow council members from other cities as, to serve as chair for water commission and chair for BTA for two or three years. So she is well-respected by other council members to, in regional body. If the Cities Association would like to select a council member to represent Cupertino to, as they have been doing, to replace a position that was held by former council member Wei, I, we are encouraging Cities Association to consider a member selected by Cupertino council as a whole to represent us, rather than picking a person of their choosing without even notifying this city council. We didn't even get notified or consulted on. That simply is not a process that should be encouraged. Yeah, so, thank you, let's vote. Yeah, thank you, I think it's four, we have four minutes left. Unless anyone has very short comment, we will just vote on the motion on the table. And then if we are afraid of making anyone upset, I think we shouldn't even be sitting here, representing Cupertino residents, because a lot of things we have to do, we are going to make one side or the other side upset, but we have to make that decision, make the hard choice, and do the right thing. I hope that all of us are choosing to do the right thing today. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you for bringing this item to the council and going back to your original comments about we want the Cities Association to be democratic, inclusive, and fair. I think that that really is the crux of the matter. I do appreciate the member of the public suggesting that we exit this committee, and it may come that that is ultimately where we're headed. And I'm very curious why, going back to these five cities that have never been represented, is that because there's a chilling effect when you're at a meeting and they tell you that the members get moved up to the next spot? Why would you apply? The system's already...
I think most people don't even know that's how things work.
Yeah, perhaps so.
Found out by looking through the minutes of every year. Most people don't know how things work, how people are selected, and even that they can apply. I didn't know that, although, yeah. So I hope that through the process, whatever happens, we are educating everyone on how executive committees or members are determined, whether they support the change or not. Then everyone will be more well-informed, and that's the purpose of democracy, transparency, and accountability. Thank you, let's vote.
Councilmember Fruen?
No.
Councilmember Mohan?
No.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Motion carries with Fruen and Mohan voting no.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor, for willing to serve on the Executive Committee. Really appreciate your time. I know it's very challenging with VTA and Cities Association. Okay, let's adjourn the meeting.